We can begin the open session. Close session announcement, open session from our city attorney Quinn Barrow.
Thank you, Mayor. Earlier this evening, the city council went into closed session to discuss the item identified on the five o'clock agenda pursuant to government code section 549, 56.9, D2E5. There was no reportable action taken.
Thank you, Mr. Barrow. We have a jury in that meeting, and we're going to go to our regular meeting, folks. So here we are. Welcome to our regular city council meeting, Tuesday, April 4, 2023. Before we begin, I'm going to have everybody get ready for the next fun part. Call the meeting to order and pledge of the flag led by Johnny Gossar at American Martyrs. Johnny, come on down. Yeah, hold it close to your mouth.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well done. Don't go anywhere, Johnny. Let's point out who's here from your family you want to pull out, and you two gentlemen, come on down.
My mom and dad.
And who else coming down with you?
My teacher and my principal, Mr. McCloslin and Mr. Courtney.
All right, gentlemen, you start off.
Good evening. Johnny Gossar is a remarkable student who has made significant contributions to his community and beyond. His outstanding academic achievements include being a consistent honorable recipient and principal's list award winner. Johnny's dedication to community service is impressive. He has participated in numerous projects, including coordinating an eighth grade event that raised over $700,000 for children's cancer research and donating 75 coats to a shelter in need through his Coats for Kids campaign. He has also volunteered his time at the Salvation Army, the St. Francis Center, and the Guatemalan Food Project. In addition to his academic and service accomplishments, Johnny has excelled in sports. He played flag football, basketball, and volleyball at American Martyrs, earning the Dawn Cooper Award for playing three varsity sports. Johnny was also inducted into the BCS Hall of Fame, and his SCVC club volleyball team was ranked number three in the country. Johnny's actions are a testament to his commitment to learning and his desire to be a well-rounded individual. His outstanding achievements exemplifies why he is being recognized tonight at City Hall.
Johnny, this is what makes all proud. You make all proud of it, not just Martyrs, all of us proud of you. So you want to give a shout out to him on senior while you're here?
Yeah. How am I senior?
Well, thank you for all that. You know what makes the best? We're not going to see you again, aren't we? Council has an election in '24, so you got a little time to get ready for us. So let me do this for you. Representative Franklin is going to give you a city pin on behalf of the city council.
Hey, Johnny.
Hi.
How you doing?
Good, how are you?
Hi. Did we meet the other page?
I think so.
You did. You did a great job with it. So we actually met on the street. He was riding e-bikes with his buddies. A couple of them just needed to sort of find the right way to do things, right?
Yeah.
But they... Well, helmet, everything. But what was great is he listened well, and they understood, and they learned, and hopefully they'll ride safely because, you know, great achievements, we want to see around more, right? Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Hold on, don't go anywhere yet. Nice try. On behalf of the city council, we recognize you, Johnny Gossar, for outstanding citizenship at American Martyrs College today's date, April 4, 2023. Congratulations.
Thank you.
That's good news. Mom and dad, you got a picture? Good counsel, everybody up here, picture. Wait, where'd you guys go? McCloslin, you guys get back in the picture, too.
We're all in here.
Nice try.
Okay. All right.
We're going to aim towards... Where's dad? Dad's over there?
Dad's...
Mom and dad?
Proud dad.
Go to shop, man.
Glad to see you. Glad to see you. Where'd you go?
Disappeared.
Thank you, thank you. Thanks for being here. Appreciate it. So... E-bike assembly. We know, right? We hit. That's an accident. Thanks for being good. That's so funny to see.
Ah, it's true.
Thank you. I'm sure he's going to get his helmet on now.
Definitely. All right, Martha, do your roll call, please.
I'll be doing it. Councilmember Haworth?
Here.
Councilmember Lesser?
Here.
Councilmember Napolitano?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Franklin?
Here.
Mayor Montgomery?
I am here as well. Thank you, Lisa. So my new calendar, most of you know, we used to do this years ago, PC, pre-COVID, baby passports. Anybody born, baby born, the city limits would get a passport, and we brought that back this year due to demand and a lot of emails saying, "Richard, could you bring it back to us?" So we have them. Let's see. Martha, we have our first two tonight with us.
Yes.
Those of you who don't know what we're talking about here, we have these official Manhattan Beach passports. See those? And the flip side, I don't know why they're pictures of anymore, but it shows their pictures and the seal from Manhattan Beach, both Oliver Pasquale and Cooper Pasquale. I don't know if they made the call or not. If not, if not feel after weather, we'll catch them next time, but let's see if they're here. Oh, there you go.
Hi, this is the mother.
Yeah. Kim, how are you? You gonna let them show live on TV? All right. We're going to show you live, Kim.
Uh-oh. Ask her first.
The little ones aren't actually with me. They're getting ready for bed.
They are?
It's early bed night.
All right. Well, hey, on behalf of the city council, we're proud to offer both Oliver and Cooper their first Manhattan Beach passports. Do you see them on TV? Can you see these?
Yes, thank you so much.
You're welcome. We're going to give them to you in person, or come by City Hall, we'll give them to you when I see you next. Congratulations and welcome to our first ones, 2023.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Bye, Kim, have a good night.
You, too, take care.
Right. Not as much fun as not in person, but okay. All right. This is a harder one for me to do. Presentation of a recommendation to outgoing communications and civic engagement manager, Jessica Vincent, led by our very own city manager, Bruce Simone. Bruce?
Should we step aside?
Yeah. Step to the right.
Jessica, have you stopped crying yet?
It's coming.
I'll wait. Okay. So many of you know Jessica Vincent. She is our communications and civic engagement manager, but she's been with the city for over 12 years. She started in the Parks and Rec department and worked her way up to be the number two in command in Parks and Rec before I snagged her out of Parks and Rec along with her team to be our newly formed communications and civic engagement group. But first, about your Parks and Rec days, you led the branding and branding and the logo efforts for the new city logo that are on the baby passports and are seen many other places, including shops in town. You were involved in the annual MBO Manhattan Beach Open Volleyball Tournament. All that planning that took place, it was all with your guidance and your expertise. Always a successful event. You led the Parks Master Plan, Community Outreach, which we could have used an outside vendor to do that, but no, we had in-house expertise, and we took advantage of that. But as I said more recently, and there were many awards, by the way, through the Parks and Rec Society that we achieved because of Jessica and her team. But as I said more recently, you became our communications and civic engagement manager, which greatly, and I say greatly enhanced, that's right, Jim, greatly enhanced our communication with the residents and with our own city employees. And that came in the form of social media releases, press releases, website updates, anything you can think of that was a communication tool, newsletters that go out on a monthly basis, tremendous improvement over what we were doing because I'd say before Jessica came here, we did a pretty lousy job of telling our story. And, you know, we think you all know what good goes on in the city, and certainly you know all the bad stuff that goes on, but we didn't do a good job of telling our story, and Jessica has taken it to new heights, and we're going to miss you for that. You have some many talents, though. Certainly your energy, your enthusiasm, you're just fun to be around. Your eye for marketing and promotion, you know how to put things, events together, big and small, as we've seen. In fact, Jessica put together the Brussels Beach event a couple of weeks back, and it was a tremendous event. And you know how to communicate messages effectively, and that's why you're perfect for this role. But I think what you do best, and I've seen it, we all seen it, is building relationships. And that's so important in the kind of work that you do. For those of you who don't know, Jessica is going on to work at Chevron, and so don't buy Chevron gas anymore because we're mad at them. But you're going to take those relationship-building skills and put them to good use there. But don't forget us here. You've promised to invite us all to your house when it's redone for the Christmas party, so I'm going to hold you to that. But at any rate, congratulations on going to Chevron. We're going to miss you tremendously, but we're still family here, so don't go too far and stop by and see us.
Well, I really wasn't ready to speak tonight, but I do just want to thank the council members. All of you up here have played a significant role in my life, including Councilmember Napolitano, who is on the video, and Councilmember Hildy Stern, who is also here, Suzanne Hadley, and also Nancy Hurstman. I'm just so grateful for everybody for trusting me to step into this role and really build up the communications office. I also want to definitely thank the Parks and Rec team, Mark Lehman, who really gave me wings and just let me fly. Without him, there's no chance that I would have been able to be in this role, so I'm very grateful to Mark and to the entire Parks and Rec team. The City of Manhattan Beach employees are so dedicated, and I'm so fortunate to have worked alongside of them. This is a very passionate group of individuals who are working as a team every single day to enhance the quality of life for all of you, for the visitors, and for the businesses, and I'm so grateful for that. And I'm almost done. I definitely want to thank my family, my husband Charlie, my son Carter, my daughter Dylan over here, who have been by my side this whole time when I'm working on vacations. They haven't minded, and they've just been there with a smile on their faces, missing some of their events and everything because I've been working. They really haven't minded, and they've stuck by me. And last but not least, I have to recognize my fabulous communications team, JoJo and Kristen up there, who inspire me every single day to do better, and they make me look good, they make the city look good. We do things through communication strategy that we all kind of collaborate on together, and I'm so grateful for them every single day, so thank you all.
Counselor Paul Tyler, Steve, you want to say anything?
Thank you, Your Honor. I would love to say something. It's just, it's a loss, and I'm very sorry to see Jessica go, but I also want to congratulate her on taking that step in her career. But she has really reworked, redone, and revitalized communications in Manhattan Beach, where before, I think Bruce touched on it, we had some communications, sometimes they were usually afterthought. Other folks were telling our story, we weren't telling our own. Jessica came in and just owned it. This was after a long time in Parks and Rec, we should just excel with all the events that we have. Manhattan Beach has been a better place because of Jessica. I know the city council has been better because of her work. I can't say enough good things about her, her efforts, her dedication. I know this was a very tough decision for her, but she's making a decision that's right for her and her family at this time, and, you know, we just want to support her and her next life. As Bruce said, we're here, and we hope you come back and visit often. We know we'll see you around town differently and everything. It's certainly a Chevron's game, but Jessica is just a new standard for the city in terms of communication, so many of the things, and dedication, and I really just want to, from my own, say thank you. Thank you for all you've done for us. And here for you.
Councilwoman Haworth?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Jessica. You know, Bruce mentioned you've been here a long time, not a long time, but since, what, 2013, I think? 2010, sorry. See, so since 2011, we've worked together, and isn't it great to see someone grow and evolve in a place? And I think that's a testament to our institution and all the people who work here and the people who manage it, but it's more a testament to you. And this next step is also, you know, it's scary to take a step like that, but kudos to you for taking it, but yes, I'm mad. But, you know, it just speaks to who you are and where you come from, and like you said, the group of people who work here in our city are so dedicated, and you thank your family for kind of not minding when you were here working, and I just need to reiterate to the public how much she's here. It's not just vacations, it's Saturdays and Sundays till eight and nine. I know she and JoJo will keep working on a brochure or a flyer just to make sure it's really great and will get people there. You know, your passion for the city has just been good for all of us. You've taught us that we have to reach out to tell our story, that we can't just sit here and expect, and I'm really going to miss you. So thank you for all you've done, and I wish you great success, but, you know, you can always come back and, you know, come back and, you know, sit and bask up here. I don't know what's wrong with it, but thank you, Jessica.
Just briefly, Jessica, I've known you since you were at Parks and Rec and saw the sort of job you did there, advertising their programming. So one of the smartest things that our city manager did was to bring your team and you into the city's manager's office to help tell our story as a city. You're going to be missed, you really will, so I wish you all the best in your next chapter.
Vice Mayor.
Jessica, I want to say something, but you'd have to write it for me. So what is it you'd like to hear? No. Seriously, I haven't been on council long, but fortunately you were there, but I have known you in my civilian life all through, all through the times that I was interacting with Parks and Recreation. I think you awarded me a trophy for my tennis achievements. But really, what I was impressed with here is your professionalism, your willingness to take input on many different occasions, and you incorporated that into our communications with the, you know, with the residents of Manhattan Beach, and that's very, very powerful and very, very useful for everybody. To get our story out there, to get it correctly, is really important to everybody, and, you know, our loss, Chevron's gain. Good luck.
Thank you.
Somebody's fair real tour. So I won't make it any longer than that. I just want to say that I'm proud of you, and those of you who don't know behind the scenes, you know when things got really bad in the city? She's up with me at 11 o'clock at the city manager writing what we're going to write to the papers, to the media. She's, no one knows that unless you're part of the team, you don't realize she's up late doing that for us. It's not my words or Joe's words or Bruce's words. She's writing what our comments are, puts them into one story and puts out there for all of us. Yes, the mayor gets a name signed to it, but she's the one that writes all of that. Now, I'll miss that part of it, too, going forward, but she's done a great job going backwards, not going forwards, but I'm not talking to Jeff Wilson, at least a year. Grab this. [applause] Give her a city pin. On behalf, Bruce should hold it up. On behalf of the Brightville Council, your last, hopefully, city pin, and this recommendation to recognize all you've done for all of us, I'm not going to read it all, but we're all proud of you, wish you the best, and come visit. Congratulations.
Yes. Awesome. Thank you.
Now, here to take a photo. You're going to be right up here.
She's dressed.
Proud of your own photo duty. Who's going to take a picture of us?
Yeah, Charlie, you can get first. No, no, Charlie, turn down. What about JoJo? JoJo should be in the picture, too. You should.
Jim, there you go.
That's okay.
Stand on the podium here.
Yeah, it's good.
Our finance director over there, look out the camera.
Is a chair in the way?
No, it's Heidi, my, you know.
We're going to Photoshop, Stephen.
Okay, we're good?
Yeah.
Okay.
One more.
Look at the JoJo.
Look at JoJo up top.
Two, three.
Yay.
Awesome.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, everyone.
Anyone want to fight?
Appreciate it, you guys.
Hi, guys. We gave it away.
I'm just going to do the rest of me standing up.
There you go.
Wait, this one's mine, right?
Josh? Oh, yeah, this is mine. Thank you.
Musical chairs?
This is... Yeah, I'm sorry.
What does he always say, downhill from here? All right, no more ceremony. No, we're going to move to item E, approval of agenda and waiver of forbidding ordinances. Counsel?
Some move.
I see you first by Councilman David Lesser, and second by Councilwoman Amy Haworth. Roll call, please.
Mayor Montgomery?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Franklin?
Yes.
Councilmember Napolitano?
Yes.
Councilmember Lesser?
Yes.
Councilmember Haworth?
Yes.
Thank you. Next item is F, city council community organization announcements of upcoming events. One minute per person, folks. City events, communications of the city, one minute per person.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yes, sir.
Before we get into that, I would like to make an announcement about the city's email situation.
Yes, please.
As you're probably all aware, we have had intermittent service outages. It's happening on a daily basis. Emails do get through eventually, but it has been spotty. We have been troubleshooting this for the last few days. We have a solution identified, but it'll take several days to implement it, so please bear with us. I realize that some of the residents' emails that may have come into the council either didn't arrive in a timely manner or may not have arrived yet, so if residents are wondering why they didn't hear back from council or staff on a particular item, it may be because of this intermittent outage that we're having. IT is working feverishly on it, and we're doing everything we can, and we'll keep you posted on the status of it, but I wanted everybody to be aware of that.
Do you recommend residents call? Bruce, we are emails, emails down, to call.
Calling is a good alternative. But they do eventually get through, but if it's something urgent, certainly give us a call.
Perfect. Good to know. All right, Josh, please.
Hello and good evening, members of the council. My name is Josh Murray, and I'm here on behalf of Manhattan Beach Library. Adults are invited to participate in the Evening Book Club on Monday, March, I'm sorry, Monday, May 1, from 6:30 to 7:30 p.m. May's book is "You're Invited" by Amanda Jayatisa. From the award-winning author of "My Sweet Girl Comes a Dangerously Addictive New Thriller About a Lavish Sri Lankan Wedding Celebration That Not Everyone Will Survive." We do have a limited amount of titles available for book club attendees, and again, this program will take place on Monday, May 1, from 6:30 to 7:30 p.m. at the Manhattan Beach Library, and the title is "You're Invited" by Amanda Jayatisa. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Josh. Those of you who don't know who Josh Murray is, the library, he's your answer man. Anything you want to the library, Josh is the guy to see. Next speaker?
Hi, my name is Val Paget. I'm here on behalf of Leadership Manhattan Beach with my colleague Carol Patterson to announce this year's project, which is an initiative dedicated to building a nutrition pantry for the Single Mom Project. Our goal is to expand the reach of the Single Mom Project and enable it to feed 50 single-parent families weekly, doubling the number of families currently served. To accomplish this goal, LMB 2023 will transform a room at Richstone Center into a nutrition pantry. We're partnering with Trader Joe's to provide nutritional food items, fresh vegetables, fruit, protein, non-perishable food, and staples. We need your help to make this project a reality. Our community has always been known for coming together to support one another, and we believe we can make a meaningful difference in these people's lives. Please consider making a donation of any amount by April 30, 2023, or by visiting our website at www.leadershipmb.org/classproject. Thank you.
Thank you, Val. Well done, Cheryl. Our next speaker?
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Pro Tim, honorable council members. My name is Eric Inteiro with WM. I'm your liaison between WM and the City of Manhattan Beach. WM and the City of Manhattan Beach invite all residents and businesses in Manhattan Beach to participate in the Free Shred Event taking place this Saturday, April 8, from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. at Miracosta High School Parking Lot at the corner of Artesia and Peck. Each household and business can bring up to three banker boxes of paper for safe and secure shredding and recycling. We ask that everyone please stay in their vehicles and open the trunk for our team to grab any material that needs to be shredded. Event information is posted on the city's calendar page of the city's website. Thank you all, and I hope to see you all there bright and early. Thank you so much.
Hold on. Those people not familiar with government speak, tell them what WM means.
Waste management, formerly, it's a rebranding, a corporate rebranding over to WM.
There you go. Well done.
No problem. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next speaker? No one else here? On Zoom, please, Martha? David Archer.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor Montgomery. David Archer, Manhattan Beach Chamber of Commerce here. I want to invite you all to come out to the South Bay Community Coalition Against Hate. We have a community conversation with Frank Meek. He is a recovering skinhead, and he's going to talk about his transformation and his triumph over hatred. It's April 20, 6:30 p.m. at American Martyrs, O'Donnell Hall, and also we have our phenomenal women event coming up on May 11, Thursday, from 10 to 2, and it will be at the Connecta Campus over off of Park Avenue. So look forward to seeing you all out there, and thank you for all your work you guys do for the city.
Thank you, David. Anyone else? Can we post up the mayor's coffee for a second, please? While she's doing that, those who don't know, I brought back the coffee with the mayor. It's a one-on-one, no staff, no Zoom, thank God, coffee with yours truly. We started east side at Coffee Bean and Tea Leaf in Manhattan Village, and also here at Pete's, and today's my first one, and we had six residents. Four of them I knew, two of them are new, but it's always good to have it. Next one is April 25th on the east side. There is life east of Sepulveda, east of PCH, I'm sorry, east of PCH. If you want to show up there, just a very informal, come ask whatever you want, and we'll go from there. Councilwoman Haworth?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome.
Madam City Clerk, if you could put up the flyer, which just amplifies what David Archer from the Chamber of Commerce was saying about the event on April 20 with Frank Meek, the reformed white supremacist. This is, I just want to point out, this is a South Bay Community Coalition Against Hate program. This is the coalition that was formed by Hildy Stern when she was on the city council. This is an effort that is led by our city, and I think it's so important that we are committed to this type of action, and these events happen well-attended, and I really hope, this is, this is an incredible speaker, and I hope, you know, that our police will attend, and other police will attend, that students will attend, parents will attend. We have a city council member from, or actually the mayor from Hermosa Beach, we have staff and city from El Segundo. This is a community, South Bay-wide coalition. We are dedicated to education, raising awareness, and this is going to be an incredible event, so I hope everybody will attend. Thank you very much.
Anybody else? Counselor, no one else? All right. This time, folks, we're going to move to our regular public comments, three minutes per person. person. I'll let everybody know, if you're first time speaking to the council, if you speak on an item on the agenda, you can speak now or speak then, not both, on the item on the agenda. We have three minutes total per person, and we'll go, next speaker, I'm sorry, our next speaker will be, Martha, who's our first speaker up? Anybody in line? Public comments? Here's our first person. All right. We'll do Zoom last.
Honorable Mayor, esteemed council, my name is Kristin Long Drew. I'm here today to show support for a formal apology for the Bruce's Beach incidents and the incidents that happened here in 1920. It's overdue, as Mayor Montgomery said in 2006. Seventeen years later, it's way overdue. I know there are people who don't understand what we need to apologize for. We weren't here then, we didn't do anything, and they're not wrong. But now is your chance to do something. Now is the chance to have the courage to admit that judging people based on the color of their skin is wrong, that we all know that. Will an apology fix everything? Not a chance. And apparently, neither will $20 million. What an apology shows is that that money never will, is that we're different, and we're better than our forefathers. It's important because right now, we aren't acting any different. Let's change that tonight. And if you still find it incomprehensible and inconceivable to apologize to someone you don't know for something you didn't do, but that you know was wrong, well then, I'm sorry to you. I hope we can show you tonight that it's not that difficult, and that it actually might do some good.
Thank you. Our next speaker?
Good evening. My name is Adam Goldson, 30-plus-year resident of Manhattan Beach. It's ironic, we're talking about outdoor dining tonight on an evening that's so cold and windy, nobody would ever want to sit outside. But I want to first, I am applying for the position of the, of the committee and hope I am selected this evening. I want to echo this council's, if not first, one of the first things you did with this new council, with public safety and additional money going to the police department. That would be forefront in my mind as we think about how to proceed with outdoor dining, emergency access, vehicle, bike, pedestrian traffic, diners on the platform, and of course, a issue near and dear to Mayor Pro Tem Franklin's heart, e-bikes racing up and down the sidewalks. I'm an optimist, I'm a problem solver, I seek creative solutions. In the outdoor dining context, I think the optimal solution is a long-term solution that's best for the entire community. There's a lot of stakeholders that make up this community. I do empathize, I sympathize with these stakeholders. After 30 years, I really do believe I sympathize with many of these different stakeholders. I'll throw out a couple of examples, noise. I understand how outdoor dining can be noisy. I live on a walk street. I would not be happy if one of my neighbors had outdoor dinner parties on their patio seven nights a week. It's a small town. We do need to maintain the small-town feel. Aesthetics are important. Aesthetics are important to those that dine and those who don't dine, indoor or outdoors. Infrastructure and cleanliness would be on the top of my list as well. I look forward to getting into that issue, but I do believe that when we do, the committee does, we'll find that there's enough challenges already with our infrastructure. Revenue, forgone revenue are important. And the last thing I want to say about the different constituencies is not forgetting about the constituencies outside of Manhattan Beach. There's a lot of folks that depend on jobs that maybe don't live in Manhattan Beach, but those families are dependent on it. So, I look forward to representing the, I think there were 118, so the 110 people who are not going to be selected this evening, as well as the rest of the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Adam. Our next speaker?
Thank you, council. My name is Gabe Greenberg. I'm also a resident of the city and had submitted an application to join the board as well. We'll see what happens with that, as we know, it's a, it's a large list. I'll echo some of Adam's sentiments. I think there's several pros and cons of outdoor dining. It's ironic that we're one of the only beach towns in all of LA, in Orange County, that has eliminated it. And, you know, I'm a regular patron downtown. I think it's important that whoever is included in this should be someone that is actually active, right? That, that's not just there every once in a while, that understands the implications to staffing. Some of the restaurants have already had to lay off staff. To tax revenue for the city, right? We're, I know some of the rules were to cut back on the number of indoor diners while doing outdoor dining. We all know that that probably didn't happen. The end result was incremental tax revenue for the city. There are several pros and cons. I think one of the biggest cons we've seen is the rodents and the noise, right? That, that were just a natural byproduct of outdoor dining. Those all can be solved with, with the right approach and right work, right? You know, there, there's New York City, other major cities that have dining on a regular basis. I think one of the things that we failed to do, and we can do a better job, is cleaning the sidewalks and doing a better job of controlling the garbage in and around downtown as it relates to this. But I would hope that, as a community, we can seriously consider both the positive and negative, come to a good resolution that benefits both the residents in the city, that has a common and appealing aesthetic, but that benefits the city and all of the visitors that, that actually come to the city. It'd be a shame to see it disappear. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Our next speaker?
Hi, I'm Carrie Wetch. Today, I express my support for an apology. To apologize is simply to say, "I'm sorry." To be sorry means to be filled with sorrow. It expresses the empathy, the humanity, and the compassion of saying, "This pains me too," leaving our status at acknowledgement and condemnation. While declining, while declining to apologize is akin to saying, "Yes, it happened, and yes, it was wrong, but no, we don't empathize." When we focus on the impact to the injured party, rather the intent of the one who caused the harm, it's possible to apologize to another for a pain we did not personally intend to cause. It's also standard practice in our society to apologize to people for hardships you sympathize with but had nothing at all to do with causing. Think of what you might say to a friend who is experiencing loss. As such, an apology is not an admission of guilt. Acknowledgement and condemnation is already an admission, not of guilt, but merely of the truth. I hope in MB, we've learned to, learned by now that attempts to deny, minimize, whitewash, or balance the truth of history tend to oppose their intended effect, because part of what perpetuates racism is the denial that it exists. By neglecting to apologize, two years ago, on behalf of its own institution, the city council created a public relations problem for our city by parlaying our racist past into a present-day national reputation. An apology from this new council would create an important break from that racist past by separating it in almost every aspect, including that which is most important, our humanity. I know these things take time. Things happen in degrees, so allow the community time to think them over and process them. 99 years has certainly been enough time for a simple apology. Please note that a real apology comes with the resolve to do better, regardless of whether that part happens today. I hope Manhattan Beach can further demonstrate its humanity with the promise to do better, not just in its words and resolutions, but in its actions as well. Thank you for your consideration. Words by Jen Donner.
Thank you. Our next speaker? They'll come down to the bottom if you're gonna talk here, folks. Anybody else gonna talk after her? I'm trying to go to Zoom. Come on.
Good evening, your mayor, your mayor and council members. My name is Julie Berkel. I've lived in Manhattan Beach for 30 years. It's been a joy and a privilege, and a joy and a privilege that has been denied to some because of what happened 100 years ago in Manhattan Beach. The common thread that I've seen throughout this sordid history is the pretext of it. 100 years ago, an eminent domain action was filed under the pretext that the city needed the land for a public park. The true motive was racism. Two years ago, when the city had before it the opportunity to apologize, the city used a different pretext in denying an apology by saying that it would expose the city to liability. That excuse and pretext has been revealed as a myth. Nobody's even making that argument anymore. But I now have, am hearing a pretext that we didn't do anything wrong personally, we don't need to apologize for it. That's a pretext, and we've just gotten more sophisticated in our pretexts in the last 100 years. And I'm here to encourage the city council to please make the only pure and honest choice that reflects humanity, and to issue a unanimous apology to, for all the harm that's been done and that has persisted over the past 100 years. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker?
Yes, hello. My name is Laura Kiley, and I've been a resident since 1994. And I'm not gonna take my whole time, because people before me have spoken so eloquently on the issue of apologizing formally about, to the Bruce family. And I would just like to say on the record, as a resident of our town, that I love so much, that I would love to see the city council unanimously offer an apology that's long overdue. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. One more time, anybody else in person? Seeing none. Zoom. All right. Heather?
Oh, yes, sorry. Hello. Hi, my name is Heather, and I am, I did not get a chance to really go through all the emails by, I forget his name, but I think it's Kent Cray Jewel, and I believe that it might, it might be an actual lawsuit coming to the city that was, that is being initiated because of the apology that was made or is going to be made. So, I will admit, I don't know everything about this. I just got the, the email attachments late this afternoon, and I haven't gone through it all. But I just wanted to tell you something really quick about apologies. My husband and I, we've been married for 20 years, three months and three days. I'm still madly in love with this man, even though we went through a very rough patch many years ago. And we all go through tough times in marriages, don't we? We've had our share of fights. But I will say something kind of interesting about our relationship is that my, my husband is, does not, he's not an apologizer. He has actually never once uttered the word, "I'm sorry" to me in the 20-plus years that we've been together. Am I salty about that? No. And the reason is, because he has shown me through his actions that he is truly sorry for something that he has done, and I think that speaks louder than words. And I think we have to be, unfortunately, in this day and age, strategic about how, how an apology can be construed if it opens our city up to litigation. These are, these are just things that you have to consider these days. So, I'm just going to put it out there, my husband's never apologized, it's on record, and yet, I know he has been very sorry for everything that he has done, and I have apologized to him, and I will say it, and I will show it. And our city can show remorse for actions done in the past and without opening ourselves up to litigation. I hope you guys can consider all the ramifications of your words and your actions tonight, and we have to also remember, it was, the Bruce's Beach, the Bruce's are the most famous family, but there were many other families impacted by the eminent domain. I actually don't even believe Bruce's Beach Park, located on Highland, should even be called that, because it's so confusing to people, but that's another story. Thank you.
Thank you, Heather. Anyone else on Zoom? We'll close public comments and go on to item H, a consent calendar, council, item three through 14. Need a motion unless someone's gonna pull something.
Motion to approve.
A motion to approve by Councilwoman Lesser, and a second by Councilwoman Franklin. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Napolitano?
Yes.
Councilmember Lesser?
Yes.
Councilmember Holworth?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Franklin?
Yes.
Mayor Montgomery?
Yes.
Motion passes, five zero.
Thank you. There are no items removed with a consent calendar. We're gonna go item J, public hearings, none. Item K, general business, folks, this is where we're gonna, the very first thing is gonna take a while for explaining it, but I'm gonna go through, we're gonna go one by one. Each councilor will pick up one person you want to nominate until we fill all eight slots. After that, selection's over, we're gonna pick two alternates. So, each one of us and Steve via remote will nominate one person. Then we go through that process, we have eight, then we're gonna select two alternates. Any confusion at any time, ask us at that point in time, the dais, we'll answer your questions. So, we're gonna do this part first, staff report, public comment, then council will start. With that, yes, hold on, Councilwoman Holworth?
Question, excuse me.
Questions, where she starts?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Just to clarify, and we are gonna hear from the staff report before we start the process, but we nominate and we go through the round of narrowing down each spot. We don't simply say, "I choose Joe," and you say, "I choose Jeff," and that's, so just, for each spot, there's a nomination, and then two rounds and three if necessary.
That is correct. On normal commissioner appointments, folks, you're gonna watch it live, in person, tonight, here, and on streaming. So, with that, our community development director, Talin Mrazakanyan, is gonna give you the whole play-by-play and go from there. Good evening.
Good evening, honorable mayor and council members. Talin Mrazakanyan, acting community development director here, ready to introduce this item and just to walk you briefly through the process. On July 22nd, city council approved the formation of a 15-member ad hoc task force for our long-term outdoor dining effort. And the makeup of that task force was essentially mirroring the COVID-19 Business Solutions Subcommittee. So, in terms of how the makeup came to be, it mirrored that Subcommittee that we made a couple of years ago. So, the 15 members consisted of seven seats that were pre-designated and eight seats that were remaining to be designated for at-large members of the public. We had a planning commissioner and an alternate seat available. We took this to the Planning Commission in August, and the, the Planning Commission voted to have Chair Joseph Ungoko as the primary member who would represent the Planning Commission. Commissioner, Commissioner Jerry Morton would serve as the alternate, but given that Commissioner Morton's term is to be up in May, the commission requested to have the council consider Jerry Morton for an at-large seat. In that case, Commissioner Sistoos would serve as the alternate. We also took this to PPIC in July, and the PPIC elected Commissioner Bob DeJau as the primary member with Commissioner Stephen D'Amico as the alternate for Chamber of Commerce, Downtown, DBPA, North MB Bid, and Commercial MDSC, which is the Manhattan Village Shopping Center. We actually turned to those entities to appoint their members themselves and then returned back to us with the appointees, and those were listed in the staff report for you, which leaves us with the eight seats that are shown here in black font, which are the seats that remain to be appointed, and that's why we're here this evening. So, on February 1st, staff released the applications. We released them via email on our website. We did a social media blast, so we had extensive outreach, so that folks knew exactly how to apply for this. It was through a seamless docs application process, which means there were no email exchanges involved. That way, we can guarantee that it's not missed in someone's email. So, the seamless doc gets directly submitted to a program, and then the applications are generated through there. We received 118 applications. Since then, we have, we have disqualified a couple of individuals based on not being either a resident or a business owner within Manhattan Beach, and then a handful of residents have also withdrawn their applications since then. So, this evening, we will appoint the eight seats, and then we will also ask the council to appoint alternates for those eight seats, reason being, in the event that, that one of the primary appointees is unable to fulfill their role, we will have to have an alternate step in, in that situation, and we wouldn't want to come back to council and go through the process again. So, we'll preemptively ask you to appoint those alternates this evening. After, after the appointments are made, our first order of business will be to determine what the meeting dates are gonna be, how frequently we're going to meet, what works for all the appointees and entirety of the task force. And upon their first meeting, the task force will be conducting what we call a SWAP analysis, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, threats of outdoor dining program, and that's the initial feedback that we want to gain from all of the community members. Of course, that will be presented to the council. Of course, that will be presented to the council. And as, as a reminder to the community, I do wanna mention that these meetings are intended to be open to the public. And so we welcome public involvement, we will be posting notices. And even though not everyone is gonna make it to the task force, we're absolutely going to encourage public involvement and continued involvement in the process. With that, we will turn to our voting sheets that we've presented you with.
One second. Director Talin, I just wanted to clarify your last point.
Yes.
These meetings are gonna be open to the public, correct?
Correct.
They'll be posted, they'll be noticed to the public that they can attend and there'll be information about how members of the public can attend.
That's correct.
Where can members of the public find those notices to learn where and when and what time? And will there be opportunities for members of the public to then speak at each of these meetings?
Yes, and I, I would suggest two things. One, we do have an outdoor dining webpage and everything will be posted on that webpage. We have a section that's going to be devoted to agendas. And so as, as, as soon as our meeting dates are ready, we will make those publicly available on the webpage. I also encourage folks to sign up on our outdoor dining interested parties list if they have not done so. Our, our webpage also includes information on how to become listed on that particular list and we'll do email blasts as the meetings get scheduled.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
I was hoping she'd get there, but you beat me to it. Go ahead, please.
So if the council's ready, then we can go forward with the selection process.
Actually, we're gonna stop right there and we're gonna take questions on the council and then a public comment, then we're gonna do our selection process. Kinda mix it up a little bit. Council questions, Councilor Holworth?
I have a question, just a quick question. You said it's, information's on the outdoor, you know, dining webpage, but where do you find, on our webpage on the city, is that just on our homepage, outdoor dining? Or do you have to know to go under community development? Or where will that be?
Under community development, it should be one of the first things you see when you get onto our community development webpage.
People have to know to go to community development. So we may consider having that somewhere else on the homepage as well if it's such a hot topic.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Any other questions in council? Councilor Napolitano, any questions at your end?
No questions, Your Honor, thank you.
You got it. All right. Talin, will you step back for a second? We'll take public comment now on this item. Remember, if you spoke earlier, can't speak again. If it's your first time talking, speak now.
Hi, Honorable Mayor and esteemed council members. My name is Jenny or Jennifer Julius. I've applied to be on the outdoor dining task force. I am very, very interested in being able to help the city come to an agreement because I honestly believe that there should be a solution that we can find that will both encompass the needs of our residents, our restaurants, their patrons, the people that are employed, our downtown residents who, who may have concerns and safety and risk. Other cities have managed to figure out a way to do this. It provides people with options in terms of dining, whether they wanna be indoors or outdoors, it's a completely different atmosphere. It allows restaurants to hire more employees. It adds to our tax basis with the revenue that's being generated. I understand we'll lose parking revenue, but I would like to delve into the differences, right? And see, is it a net positive, is it a net negative? How can we make this work so that it works for all? So I seriously ask you to consider my appointment to the council. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Audrey Judson. I'm a downtown resident, I'm also a business owner and I hope you will consider me for the, for the outdoor dining panel. I, I have been enjoying the outdoor dining, I've really enjoyed it, but I also realize that there are some issues too with it. So I'm hoping that we can come to some kind of resolution that will be safe and will also take into consideration the businesses downtown. Because unfortunately with the parking, removal of some of the parking, even though it does, I'm, I'm sensitive to the fact that it does take away from revenue from the city, but it also has impacted some of the businesses. And I know of one business that did close as a result of just the employees just not being able to park. That was one of the reasons. So anyway, I hope you consider me. Thanks.
Thank you, Audrey. Whoa.
Wow.
Sorry.
Here's an entrance.
Members of council, I think, our community development director, the planning commission meeting, they talked about, I think Commissioner Morton's term is ending. I do think that there are some overlap issues that I think are appropriate to consider. And I know that the planning commission was looking at having y'all consider Commissioner Morton taking a different seat or being, being there. If he does, I would just ask that that would be seat 13, 14, or 15, or not 11 and 12. Thank you.
Hello, Major Mayor Montgomery and City Council. My name is Brenda O'Leary and I'm here tonight because I've applied to join the outdoor dining committee. I'm here in person because as a 30-year resident, this is very important to me. I believe that outdoor dining is extremely important to our community. I know we all suffered through the pandemic and one of the silver linings that really came out of the pandemic was we did have the outdoor dining. People could get together, they could sit in the community, they could see the beautiful days, the beautiful skies at night. So I believe this is important. But I also believe that the approach that we took was, was kind of ad hoc. It was a quick, it was a Band-Aid approach of, you know, here and there and some things were borderline dangerous in the streets. So I believe that we need a more consistent approach, a more permanent approach, something that looks like the community, goes with the look and feel. But again, we have to be careful of our business owners. I see Maureen here tonight, so we, there's a trade-off. We want to build something beautiful, functional and special for our community, but we also don't want to take revenue or parking away from the business owners. So I know that this is something that is important to discuss with the community and have the community on the same page. I've worked in business for 30 years. I'm the queen of SWOT analyses, happy to spearhead that in the community. I also have some knowledge of development. My fiance and I started a life sciences real estate development company and built ten properties in, in California and then across the US. We sold it to a larger healthcare developer. So I have experience working with developers and architects and designing things that are attractive but also functional. And sometimes I know that those two things don't go hand in hand. You, you think something's fabulous, but then you look at the functionality and you say, "It doesn't quite work." So I would love to be part of this committee, it would be very important to me, and I hope you select me. Thank you.
Thank you, Brenda. Anybody else here in the audience wanna speak on this item? Seeing none, Zoom, please, Martha? No one on Zoom. I will close public comment on this item now. Talin, you wanna come back? Director Muzakanyan? The floor is yours again.
Thank you, council. We'll start with seat number six, downtown resident, if you wanna take out your seat number six sheet. We do have all the available applicants listed for you and we will commence the nominations.
Before you start, folks, this is what we've had to go through. 119 names broken down by where they live, applications and what zone they're in. They're one of four zones, east side, west side, you know, north, south. They broke it down, there's no excuse for us not to know all about you. And it's a little package right here. All to their homework. Talin, the floor is yours again.
Thank you. We'll start with the nominations for seat number six, Councilmember Holworth.
Now, I would also like to make a few introductory comments, if I may.
Please.
Your mayor, Mayor Mayor, Your Honor? Just been a minute. So first, I wanna say that for all of these seats, I'm sure, like myself, the rest of you know many, if not most, of the people who are applying personally and some very well, correct? So this is one of those situations where it's like, oh, it's, it's, I know so many people and so many people who would be qualified and it's always a little bit awkward to do this in public. And so instead of saying so-and-so would be terrible at this, I'm not, I'm gonna say positive things. By the way, nobody would be terrible at this. That's just my sense of humor, so sorry for that. But I guess I want you to understand that as I was reading through this notebook, I was really looking, if I didn't know you and hadn't talked to you personally or hadn't gotten an email from you, I was looking to see if there was an openness in your application, that you were open to an idea. It didn't have to be, you know, there, there were some who said, "Don't want outdoor dining." Okay. Some said, "Absolutely have to have it," which, you know, I understand. But I was looking for people who were maybe giving me a reason, what they would be looking for, what their criteria might be. Adam mentioned public safety, Brenda mentioned, we have to talk about the other retailers, you know. I want to see that you're thinking about different things. Because you're not just going to be working to provide something for restaurant owners, you're gonna be working with the finance director to find out, like Jenny was talking about, what's the difference in retail revenue, you know, revenue that retail shops get versus restaurants versus parking, right? Has it been a, is it public safety, is there crime, are there rats, et cetera, et cetera? And I want to, you know, staff, I would hope, would, would also provide so much information that you'll be overloaded. Stuff like the Urban Land Institute study from a few years ago that was been much maligned politically, but actually has tremendous information in its pages about this very issue and engaged over 500 residents back in the day. All right? So I'm getting there. This is important stuff. I also don't wanna have to, I got a lot of friends here, I don't wanna like, I'm picking you at you.
See what time it was?
All right. No, I set the stage just as a.
Exactly.
No, but I want, I want them to understand that they're, oh, stop. What, you're not even here. All right. He's here. So there's a lot of criteria, all right? There's a lot of things to consider. With that, I nominate for my downtown dining task force resident person, Audrey Judson. You get 20 minutes.
My, my turn to make my comments. It won't be as long. I'll simply say, this is gonna be really difficult. As Councilmember Holworth just indicated, I know so many of these applicants, a number of them have reached out to me. I've met with several, they've been passionate about being part of the city. And the positive side is that there are so many residents that wanna be part of this process. So many residents understand this balance and really care. And I wanna thank you for all of those that apply. And please continue to be my friend if I'm not able to nominate you or appoint you. You heard that these meetings are gonna be open to the public and inclusive. Please attend, even if you are not necessarily on the committee itself. With my first nomination, I would nominate Jim Burton.
Councilmember Napolitano?
No nominations. I, I, Councilor Lesser nominated by, into nominee.
Mayor Pro Tem Franklin?
Yes, thank you. A brief comment. This is a lot of work. It was really good getting to know you, if I didn't know you, to get to know you in your application. These commissions are, and task force are very important. I was on several before I came on council and it really did help me get a good grasp of what's happening here in the city. So thank you for the time that you've given to this project already and look forward to the process. I also don't have a nomination because I had selected Jim Burton as well.
Mayor Montgomery?
I'll echo my colleagues' comments. Many I know, thanks for the emails and comments. You'll see who I pick. Like Councilor Howard mentioned, I try to find the center of all this, not far right, not far left. Hope we find the center and kind of compromise, we back Park Cities, Utah. So with that, no further nominations.
So we have Jim Burton as the appointee for seat number six, downtown resident.
Actually? Actually, don't we go to round one where we have an opportunity?
Yeah, you go.
So you go through the two that qualified moving forward would be?
You have to get two.
Okay, sorry, pardon me.
Yes.
Audrey Judson and Jim Burton.
Correct.
So that takes us to round one.
So round one, I would nominate Audrey Judson and Jim Burton.
Is it just one?
Just one.
Just one.
Two, in this round you get two. This round you get two.
This round you get two.
Oh, that's right, yeah.
It's Steve's turn next, anyway.
Councilmember Napolitano?
Yeah.
Yeah, they was blind, sure. Let's go for both for this round.
It was, it was Judson and Burton.
Okay.
Mayor Pro Tem Franklin?
Okay, yes, so I would nominate Jim Burton and Audrey Judson in this round.
Mayor Montgomery?
Jim Burton, Audrey Judson.
Councilmember Holworth?
Judson and Burton.
That takes us to round two. Councilmember Napolitano?
Burton.
Mayor Pro Tem Franklin?
Mr. Burton?
Mayor Montgomery?
Jim Burton.
Councilmember Holworth?
Burton.
Councilmember Lesser?
Hmm. Jim Burton for this one. We'll make it unanimous.
5-0, Jim Burton.
Congratulations to Mr. Burton. Our next one, seat number eight.
So I have a question.
Yes.
So if we go to the meetings, can we make public comments to Jim Burton?
You wanna go to the meetings, you can.
Payback.
Seat eight?
Seat eight, North Manhattan Beach resident, we'll start with Mayor Montgomery.
Nicholas Brinkelson. MB.
MB Brinkelson. I have a 20-minute comment, but I'm gonna cut to the chase and nominate Michael Cohen.
I will nominate Kimberly Kelly.
Councilmember Napolitano?
No further nominations.
Council, Mayor Pro Tem Franklin?
Samuel Braitman.
For round one, we'll start with Councilmember Holworth with two nominations.
Uh, yeah, I'll go with Cohen and Kelly.
Councilmember Lesser?
Kelly.
We need two.
Gosh, this is hard. Michael Cohen. Michael Cohen, I don't have to, I'll add Cohen.
I've been corrected, you actually don't need to include two.
All right.
I'm looking at my very experienced colleagues to the left. Councilmember Napolitano?
Kelly.
Wait, which one, did he say Kelly?
Kelly.
Okay.
Was that Kelly?
Kimberly Kelly.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Franklin?
Braitman and Kelly.
And Mayor Montgomery?
Nico Brinkelson and Sam Braitman.
Takes us to round two. Councilmember Lesser?
Kimberly Kelly.
A clarification.
Stop for a second. Yes?
Only Kelly and Brinkelson moved forward though, correct?
They had two votes.
I'm just clarifying for the rest.
Yes. There are two choices from now on.
Right. No, Cohen didn't make it.
Braitman.
Cause David only voted for Kelly.
No.
I threw in Cohen at the end.
Oh, you did throw in Cohen, well. Okay.
Okay, so I was actually taking his second.
Sorry, I forgot that he, okay.
So we have three choices moving forward this round. Cohen, Kelly, Brinkelson.
Right.
Those who scored at home, 1, 3, 5.
Braitman.
Four?
No, it's Kelly, Cohen and Braitman.
Brinkelson before it, all right.
Councilmember Napolitano?
Joining.
Mayor Pro Tem Franklin?
Braitman.
Mayor Montgomery?
Braitman.
Councilmember Holworth?
Kelly.
We have three to two.
So we have Kimber, Kelly, Kimber, Kimberly Kelly as our. So we have Kelly, Kimberly Kelly as our seat number eight appointee.
Make it unanimous, five zero. Welcome Kimberly Kelly to the team. Your next one up.
Next seat is seat number 10. This is for a commercial, this is for a commercial entity, non-Manhattan Village Shopping Center, which means outside of the mall. The business has to be outside of the mall. We'll start with Mayor Pro Tem Franklin.
John Altimura.
Mayor Montgomery.
His name is not correct here. His real name is Harry Ashikian, mostly known as a shoe pair guy on Howland Avenue in North Manhattan Beach. He doesn't go, but he goes by Harry. So, Harry Ashikian.
Councilmember Horwath.
Yeah, I was going with Harry as well.
Councilmember Lesser.
Harry as well.
Councilmember Napolitano. For round one, we'll start with Mayor Montgomery.
Harry Ashikian.
One vote.
Harry Ashikian, one vote.
Councilmember Lesser.
Harry, one vote.
Councilmember Napolitano.
That's three, I'll join.
And Mayor Pro Tem Franklin.
I'm sorry, what was that one he said?
He said he would join with Harry.
Oh, Harry, yeah. Okay, I'll go with Harry. There we go, right?
Five oh unanimous. Correct.
Okay, five oh for Harry Ashikian.
All right, congratulations, Harry. More work for you to do.
His name's not Salvatore?
No.
Next up is seat number 11. This is for at-large resident. And I will remind the council that for the at-large resident category, we do have two seats available. So we will go through seat number 11, and then we will repeat the exercise for seat number 12 for a second appointee.
Before we start confirming, Jerry Morton is off, coming off planning commission, but he did an interest in expressing as an at-large resident?
At-large resident or business, he would qualify for either one, for the next five seats.
Got it, we'll save him for later. All right, got it, thank you.
Oh, I forgot about that.
So for at-large resident, seat number 11, we will start with Councilmember Napolitano.
Thank you. I can't read you. Paul Mullen.
I'm sorry, I had a hard time hearing you.
Paul Mullen.
Oh, Carl Mullen, okay.
Sorry, Paul Mullen.
Paul Mullen.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Franklin.
Yes, Adam Goldston.
Mayor Montgomery.
No further nomination.
Councilmember Horwath.
Brenda O'Leary.
And Councilmember Lesser.
Greg Harris.
For round one, we'll start with Mayor Pro Tem Franklin.
Adam Goldston and, that'll be the only one.
Mayor Montgomery.
Paul Mullen, Adam Goldston.
Councilmember Horwath.
Adam Goldston and Brenda O'Leary.
Councilmember Lesser.
Greg and Brenda.
And Councilmember Napolitano.
Paul Mullen.
Okay, we'll move on to round two.
Okay, so Goldston, O'Leary, and Mullen.
So for round two, the options are Mullen, Goldston, or O'Leary. We'll start with Mayor Montgomery.
Paul Mullen.
Councilmember Horwath. Councilmember Lesser.
O'Leary.
Councilmember Napolitano.
Paul Mullen.
And Mayor Pro Tem Franklin.
Paul Mullen.
That's three oh, three two for Paul Mullen.
Make it unanimous, five zero, Paul Mullen. Welcome, Paul. My condolences, you have a real job now.
This is still residence, this one.
At-large resident, seat number 12. We'll start with Councilmember Lesser.
Faith Lyons.
I'm sorry.
Faith Lyons.
Yes, sorry.
Bridget Goodman and Pierce Serrano.
Just one.
Just one for now.
Okay, Bridget Goodman.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Franklin.
Oh, Bridget Goodman. Adam Goldston.
Mayor Montgomery.
Mark Kordonski.
And Councilmember Horwath. Thank you, we'll move on to round one. Councilmember Napolitano.
Bridget Goodman.
Mayor Pro Tem Franklin.
So, Adam Goldston and Bridget Goodman.
Mayor Montgomery.
One vote only.
No, you get two if you want, but you're saying one. I'm so sorry.
One vote, make it clear, one vote only.
Councilmember Horwath.
Well, I'm doing two votes. Rachel Vandenberg and Faith Lyons.
And Councilmember Lesser.
Faith Lyons and Mark Kordonski.
Goodman, Kordonski, and Lyons.
What was your second vote?
What's that?
Your second was which vote?
Goodman, Kordonski, and Lyons.
Thank you.
So for round two, we have Goodman, Kordonski, and Lyons. We'll start with Mayor Pro Tem Franklin. Mayor Montgomery.
Kordonski.
I don't know what to do.
Councilmember Lesser.
Lyons.
And Councilmember Napolitano. So for round three, we'll select between Goodman and Lyons.
Goodman and Lyons, down to two.
We'll start with Mayor Montgomery.
Goodman.
Councilmember Horwath. Councilmember Lesser. Councilmember Napolitano. Councilmember Franklin.
And Goodman.
Would like to make it unanimous, if I may.
Yes. Five zero, Goodman, seat number 12, at-large resident.
That takes us to seat number 13. This is at-large resident or business. Just to clarify, we have three seats available for at-large resident or business, and it'll be seat number 13, 14, or 15. So we'll start with nominations with Councilmember Horwath. Councilmember Lesser. Councilmember Napolitano. Mayor Pro Tem Franklin.
It's number 13, okay, just a second, please. John Altimura.
We need one second just to double check.
I'm sorry, what'd you say?
I didn't say anything.
Actually, question on the list.
Councilmember Lesser has a question.
Yes, Councilmember Lesser.
I just wanted to make sure in terms of my nomination that she qualifies on this particular list.
If they're on the at-large resident list, you could use that list as well. They can pick from the earlier list as well. So that takes us to Mayor Montgomery.
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on to round one, we'll start with Councilmember Lesser. Councilmember Napolitano. Mayor Pro Tem Franklin. Mayor Montgomery.
Rafferty and Audrey Judson.
For round two, we will select from Lyons, Rafferty, or Judson. We'll start with Councilmember Napolitano.
Lyons.
Mayor Pro Tem Franklin.
Rafferty.
Councilmember Horwath. Councilmember Napolitano.
Peter Kim.
And Mayor Pro Tem Franklin.
Pierce Serrano.
These are all five great people.
Yeah. This is awful.
All right.
We'll start round one with Councilmember Horwath.
Excuse me, can I just confirm your nomination? Councilmember Lesser.
I chose Mark Kordonski.
Councilmember Horwath.
Thank you. Judson and Serrano.
Councilmember Lesser.
Kordonski and Serrano.
Councilmember Napolitano.
Peter Serrano.
Mayor Pro Tem Franklin.
Kim Serrano.
Mayor Montgomery. Round two between Serrano or Peter Kim. We'll start with Councilmember Lesser.
Pierce Serrano.
Councilmember Napolitano.
Peter Kim.
Mayor Pro Tem Franklin. Mayor Montgomery.
Pierce Serrano.
Councilmember Horwath.
Serrano.
Audrey.
Five oh, Serrano, that's seat number 14.
Welcome, Peter, way to go.
Serrano.
Here. Here or here?
Last but not least, seat number 15, at-large resident or business. We'll start with Mayor Pro Tem Franklin.
Peter Kim.
Mayor Montgomery.
Jerry Morton.
Councilmember Horwath.
Audrey Judson.
Councilmember Lesser.
I have got mixed up on my sheets, Greg Harris, is he eligible on this one?
Resident or business?
Yep.
Yes.
Greg Harris.
Thank you. Councilmember Napolitano.
Peter Kim.
For round one, we'll start with Mayor Montgomery.
Jerry Morton and Audrey Judson.
Councilmember Horwath.
Audrey Judson and Jerry Morton.
Councilmember Lesser.
Audrey Judson and Greg Harris.
Councilmember Napolitano.
Peter Kim.
And Mayor Pro Tem Franklin. All are available for round two, so that would be Morton, Judson, Harris, Kim.
Of course they are.
Okay, Audrey Judson.
Councilmember Lesser.
Audrey Judson.
Councilmember Napolitano.
The embarrassment of riches here, they're all great nominees.
Absolutely.
I'm going to stick with my original one though, Peter Kim.
Mayor Pro Tem Franklin.
Agreed, I'm going to go with Peter Kim.
And Mayor Montgomery.
Seeing no second, I'll make it official, Audrey Judson. Make it official, five oh, Audrey Judson.
Okay, thank you.
Don't go anywhere, folks, we have two alternates to go, so don't go anywhere. Fun's not over yet.
It's really awkward. Oh, really?
One alternate?
No, where are all these others?
I thought we had two alternates.
Six, eight, 10.
One alternate per seat.
Oh, per seat, okay, got it, got it. And Ms., sorry, can I ask a question?
Yes, please.
Is an alternate allowed, well, I guess they're allowed if the public's allowed, to attend a meeting even if the regular people are there?
Yes, absolutely.
They just wouldn't get to vote.
That's correct.
Okay, we need to spend a minute here. Okay, we need to spend a minute here and update.
We'll start again with seat number six, so this is, just to repeat for the benefit of the public, this is for an alternate member. Seat number six, downtown resident. We'll start nominations with Councilmember Haworth.
One second.
Could you please list everybody that we nominated the last round?
Yes.
Nominated or...
I'm sorry, selected.
Appointed.
Selected, appointed, yes.
Jim Burton for seat number six, downtown resident. Kimberly Kelly for seat number eight, North Manhattan Beach resident. Harry Ashikian for seat number 10, commercial, non-MVSC. For seat number 11, at-large resident, Paul Mullen. For seat number 12, at-large resident, Bridget Goodman. For seat number 13, at-large resident or business, Lyons. For seat number 14, at-large resident or business, Sirota, Peter Sirota. And for seat number 15, at-large resident or business, Audrey Judson.
Thank you.
Okay, same format as before, here we go. Seat number six, downtown resident, alternate.
Councilmember Haworth.
O'Leary.
Councilmember Lesser.
Pick James Quilliam.
Councilmember Napolitano. Sorry, Councilmember Napolitano, we couldn't hear you, if you don't mind repeating.
Am I correct in saying that Suzanne Laurie has withdrawn her application?
That is correct.
Okay, Carol Perrin.
Mayor Pro Tem Franklin.
One moment, please. James Quilliam.
Mayor Montgomery.
No further nomination.
For round one, we'll start with Councilmember Lesser.
First going to say thank you to members of the public for sticking with us, watching this excitement almost as exciting as watching grass grow. I will nominate O'Leary and Quilliam.
Councilmember Napolitano.
Carol Perrin.
Council... Mayor Pro Tem Franklin.
Quilliam.
Mayor Montgomery.
Carol Perrin.
Councilmember Haworth.
O'Leary and Perrin.
So for round two, we can select from O'Leary, Quilliam, or Perrin. We'll start with Councilmember Napolitano.
Thank you, and I'll stick with Carol Perrin, she's been active in this process for the last several years since COVID started, so I support her nomination.
Mayor Pro Tem Franklin.
Carol Perrin.
Mayor Montgomery.
Carol Perrin.
Councilmember Haworth.
And I will stick with Carol Perrin.
And I will absolutely join Carol Perrin.
Or join, I should say.
And make it unanimous.
5-0 for Carol Perrin as the alternate for seat number six. Seat number eight, North Manhattan Beach resident for the alternate seat, we'll start with Mayor Montgomery.
Nico Bringleston.
Councilmember Haworth.
Cohen.
Councilmember Lesser.
No nominations.
Councilmember Napolitano.
No further.
And Mayor Pro Tem Franklin.
Braitman.
For round one, we'll start with Councilmember Haworth.
Okay, Cohen and Bringleston.
Councilmember Lesser.
Cohen and Bringleston.
Councilmember Napolitano.
Peter Bringleston.
Mayor Pro Tem Franklin.
Braitman and Cohen.
And Mayor Montgomery.
Bringleston and Cohen.
All nominees are available for round two, Cohen, Bringleston, oh, not Braitman, sorry.
Not Braitman, right?
Bringleston or Cohen. We'll start with Councilmember Lesser.
These are really hard. Cohen.
Councilmember Napolitano. Councilmember Franklin.
Bringleston? Bringleston?
Mayor Montgomery.
Bringleston.
Councilmember Haworth.
Cohen.
That's 3-2 for...
Do you want to make it unanimous, or?
Yes, make it 5-0.
Yes.
5-0 for Michael Cohen. That's seat number eight, alternate, North Manhattan Beach resident. Seat number 10, alternate, commercial, non-MVSC, we'll start nominations with Mayor Pro Tem Franklin.
Peter Kim.
Mayor Montgomery.
Kim Riley.
Councilmember Haworth.
Patrick Graham.
Councilmember Lesser.
John Altamura.
And Councilmember Napolitano.
I'm going to try to think, Peter Kim, he was active in this last year as well, and forth in bed, and represents North Manhattan, so I'm spreading these around always. Go with Peter Kim.
Round one, we'll start with Mayor Montgomery.
Kim Riley. Just one.
Councilmember Haworth.
Pat Graham. Just one.
Councilmember Lesser.
Kim Riley.
And Councilmember Napolitano.
When I was saying Kim Riley, is that Peter Kim and Kim Riley?
The first name is Kim, the last name is Riley.
Yeah.
They did one vote.
Okay, since we're two, okay. Peter Kim.
And Mayor Pro Tem Franklin.
Peter Kim and Kim Riley.
For round two, we'll pick from Kim Riley and Peter Kim. Councilmember Haworth.
Peter Kim.
Councilmember Lesser.
Riley.
Councilmember Napolitano.
Peter Kim.
Mayor Pro Tem Franklin.
Peter Kim.
Mayor Montgomery.
You have three votes.
Shall we make it unanimous?
Make it unanimous.
Okay, Peter Kim, alternate for seat number 10. Seat number 11, alternate for at-large resident, we'll start nominations with Councilmember Napolitano.
Brendan Laurie wasn't chosen, right?
That's right.
Correct. Councilmember Franklin.
I just got to update my list here. Adam Goldston.
Mayor Montgomery.
Loretta Rafferty.
Councilmember Haworth.
No further nominations.
And Councilmember Lesser.
Bill Horry.
For round one, we'll start with Mayor Pro Tem Franklin.
Goldston and Rafferty.
Mayor Montgomery.
Rafferty and Goldston.
Councilmember Haworth.
O'Leary and Horry.
Councilmember Lesser.
O'Leary and Horry.
Councilmember Napolitano.
O'Leary.
Round two. Goldston, Rafferty, O'Leary, Horry.
Amazing.
Mayor Montgomery.
So with Rafferty?
Councilmember Haworth.
O'Leary.
Councilmember Lesser.
O'Leary.
Councilmember Napolitano.
O'Leary.
Number three.
Uh, well, uh...
Come on, just go ahead and pick one, Joe, go ahead, pick one.
Yeah, O'Leary.
4-1, let me make it unanimous at five.
5-0. O'Leary, that's seat number 11, alternate. Seat number 12, at-large resident, alternate. We'll start nominations with Councilmember Lesser.
This is so hard. Paul Beswick.
Councilmember Napolitano.
Rafferty.
Rafferty, he said.
Mayor Pro Tem Franklin.
He said Rafferty.
He said Rafferty, yeah, sorry.
Sorry, I just can't.
No, no, it's okay.
Something about his mic. Let's see. Robert Nichol.
Mayor Montgomery.
No further nomination.
And Councilmember Haworth.
Vandenberg, Rachel Vandenberg.
We'll start round one with Councilmember Napolitano.
Rafferty and Beswick.
Mayor Pro Tem Franklin.
Rafferty and Nichol.
Mayor Montgomery.
Rafferty, one pick.
Councilmember Haworth.
Vandenberg and Beswick.
And Councilmember Lesser.
Beswick and Vandenberg.
Okay, I'll move forward.
Everyone except Nichol, right? So, Rafferty, Beswick, Vandenberg. For round two, we'll start with Mayor Pro Tem Franklin.
Rafferty.
Mayor Montgomery.
Rafferty.
Councilmember Haworth.
Vandenberg.
Councilmember Lesser.
Rachel Vandenberg.
And Councilmember Napolitano.
I'm going to draw this out for a while.
Shall we make it unanimous?
Yes. 5-0, Rafferty, and seat number 12, at-large.
It is great that so many people want to do this. And it is terrible that we have to, yeah, okay.
Seat number 13, at-large resident or business, alternate.
Okay, Vandenberg.
Councilmember Lesser.
Mark Kordonski.
Councilmember Napolitano.
Peter Bringleston.
Mayor Pro Tem Franklin.
Vandenberg.
Mayor Montgomery.
No further.
Round one, we'll start with Councilmember Lesser.
Kordonski and Vandenberg.
Councilmember Napolitano.
Kordonski and Vandenberg.
Councilmember Franklin.
Vandenberg alone.
Mayor Montgomery.
Kordonski, one vote.
Councilmember Haworth.
Vandenberg, one vote.
There you go, make it clear.
Round two between Vandenberg and Kordonski. We'll start with Councilmember Napolitano.
Vandenberg.
Mayor Pro Tem Franklin.
Vandenberg.
Mayor Montgomery.
Kordonski.
Councilmember Haworth.
Vandenberg.
Vandenberg as well, let's tell we make it unanimous?
Yes.
Seat number 13, at-large resident or business, alternate, Vandenberg. Seat number 14, at-large resident or business, alternate, we'll start nominations with Mayor Montgomery.
Jerry Morton.
Councilmember Haworth.
George Wright.
Councilmember Lesser.
One more try, Mark Kordonski.
Councilmember Napolitano.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear Councilor Haworth's nomination.
George.
George Wright.
Audrey Judson.
We like her too.
We got her, okay.
We got her.
Alice Newhouse.
And Mayor Pro Tem Franklin.
And I'm sorry, I was fumbling with papers, could you tell me Mayor Montgomery's selection?
Jerry Morton.
Oh, Jerry Morton, of course. And then also, Councilmember Lesser.
Mark Kordonski.
Okay, and, um, you already got that one? Patrick Graham.
For round one, we'll start with Councilmember Haworth.
George Wright and Jerry Morton.
Councilmember Lesser.
Mark Kordonski and Jerry Morton.
Councilmember Napolitano.
Morton and Newhouse.
Mayor Pro Tem Franklin.
Jess Morton.
Mayor Montgomery.
Morton.
So that's seat number 14, at-large resident or business, alternate, Jerry Morton.
All right, make it unanimous, Jerry, good job.
Jerry.
All right, Jerry. This is our last alternate seat, folks, we're going to take a break after this, brutal exercise.
Wait, at-large, and this is, it could be anybody on...
Resident or business.
Anybody, okay.
We'll start nominations with Mayor Pro Tem Franklin.
I'm going to go with John Altamura, he's got the, he's involved with three enterprises in downtown, retail, restaurant, and an office.
Mayor Montgomery.
George Wright.
Councilmember Haworth.
No further.
Councilmember Lesser.
I have names of people that we've already selected, and I'd like to include others. Bill Horry.
Councilmember Napolitano.
Thank you, someone who professes to be neutral in this, and that's Alice Newhouse.
We'll start round one with Mayor Montgomery.
George Wright, one vote.
Uh, Councilmember Haworth.
Sorry, yeah, I'll do George and Newhouse.
Councilmember Lesser.
I will do Horry and Newhouse.
Councilmember Napolitano.
Newhouse.
Mayor Potem Franklin.
Newhouse and Wright.
Options for round two are Wright and Newhouse. We'll start with Councilmember Haworth.
I'm going to pick George Wright, and I want people to understand that I do know that he will be fair and balanced, and is someone who can really work with a lot of different people and likes to move things forward.
Councilmember Lesser.
Alice Newhouse.
Councilmember Napolitano.
Newhouse.
Mayor Potem Franklin.
Uh, Wright.
Mayor Montgomery.
George Wright.
Shall we make it unanimous?
Yes, sir.
George Wright. Seat number 15, alternate.
Thank you all, everyone. Want to tell everybody your timeframe for the first actual task force meeting? Do you have an idea when they would actually meet first?
We're hoping to be able to meet end of April, latest early May.
Fantastic. Thank you very much. Thank you all for being here for this fun select surprise. Those of you at home.
Thank you.
I know it was tough. Thank you all for applying and, uh, just help the meetings. We're going to take a short break. We'll come back for the next item, yes?
Before you do, I just, I want to recognize Talia and her staff. Yes.
We're going to recognize them.
Okay, but they did a phenomenal job putting all this together, and it was a lot of work. I know it was a lot of work for you to go through and select all these, but there was a lot of front-end work that Talia and her staff put into it, so thank you.
Yes, well done. Thank you for making our job easier. Five-minute recess, folks, we'll come back to the next item. Seven minutes per Councilor Haworth. Seven-minute recess. All right, folks, we're getting to the meeting now. Those please turn cell phones off. No, we don't hear them while we're up here. Cell phones are off, silent, vibrate, whatever you want. As long as they're not on, we can hear them. We're good to go. Our next item here is item number, I'm sure we're on the same page. One six. Consideration of Resolution of Apology, City of Manhattan Beach's Role in Racially Motivated Condemnation of Properties of Bruce's Beach. A report by City Manager Bruce Mo.
Actually, Ali Latranya from my office will give the presentation. All right?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. My name's Alexandria Latranya, Policy Management Analyst for the City of Manhattan Beach. The item before you is the consideration of the Resolution of Apology for the city's role in the racially motivated condemnation of the properties at Bruce's Beach. So as you know, the City Council created the Bruce's Beach Task Force in 2020 to research and properly acknowledge the city's racially motivated eminent domain action that took place in the 1920s. The task force subsequently suggested a resolution of apology, and Councilmember Napolitano and Councilmember Franklin submitted alternate resolutions for consideration. Ultimately, the City Council chose to adopt on April 6, 2021, a statement of acknowledgement, condemnation, and empathy regarding Bruce's Beach. On March 21 of this year, Councilmembers- On March 21 of this year, Councilmembers Lesser and Hoeworth requested that Councilmember Napolitano's previously submitted resolution of apology be brought back for council consideration at tonight's meeting. That resolution is before you now for consideration. However, there are a couple of minor suggestions and edits from the staff that are specifically identified in the staff report, and I just wanted to run through a couple of those before you now. So in the first paragraph, previously listed John McCaskill, Elzia Irvin, and James and Lula Slaughter. These families own properties just south of 26th Street, near the location of the properties acquired through eminent domain, but they were not part of the eminent domain proceedings. The history report includes information regarding McCaskill, who owned his property with his in-laws, so that's Elzia Irvin, and provided information about John McCaskill being part of the NAACP swim-in that occurred in the 1920s. So he's a major part of this story and is identified in the history report, and that's why it is important to include his name in this, and that's why I believe Councilmember Napolitano originally included it. It also identifies the Slaughters as experiencing harassment and intimidation from the KKK in the form of a fiery cross, as well as an attempted arson on their property that occurred in the middle of the night. So they did experience this harassment and intimidation as outlined in the history report. Therefore, it's suggested in the red line edits that's included in your resolution draft to move these names down to paragraph two, just to still identify them, include them, but make it more accurate, because in that paragraph, it does say the property owners, but they were not part of that eminent domain proceeding. Since the posting of the agenda, information was presented by historian Allison Rose Jefferson, and former members, and edits were submitted by former members of our history advisory board. Those edits have been included in the public comments, so hopefully you've been able to review those, but I'm just going to review just a couple of edits with you, just for clarity's sake and for the members of the public. So one of the edits was to move those names down, so John McCaskill, Elzia Irvin, James and Lula Slaughter, down to paragraph two from the first paragraph, and include James and Anna Janet Leggett, as well as the Black visitors who sought beach access here. And that's going to be part, or that was suggested to be part of paragraph two. So hopefully, that's clear. James and Anna Janet Leggett owned property near the Bruce's Beach property as well. They were a Black family that also owned property. The other edits identified by our history advisory board members, I'll just run through those very quickly, was to make an edit to the recitals in section A, so rather than saying roughly a half a dozen, say five families. And again, moving those names, John McCaskill, Elzia Irvin, and James and Lula Slaughter, down to the second paragraph in the apology resolution. The second edit was to remove subsection C to little i. I don't know exactly how to say that, but it's the section that begins unknown persons letting out the air from tires of vehicles owned by Black visitors. So our history advisory board members indicate that it's uncooperated information, so they suggest removing that. They also suggest removing, from the recitals, three little i that says an adjacent property owner cordoning off property as, so as to force the Black beachgoers to walk one-half miles to the neighborhood across the ocean. This is suggested to be removed for its ambiguity. And then the next revision is for the next section down, for CI5, is adding some language there, rather than listing out the ordinances, they suggest adding in, creating obstacles for traditional beach-going experiencing, like changing into bathing suits and making parking difficult around Bruce's Beach. So those are the edits, they are listed in, they're available to the members of the public in the back of their room, and they were also presented to City Council for your consideration. If you have any questions about those edits or the resolution that is before you, I'm happy to provide answers, but at this time, staff recommends that City Council discuss and provide direction and consider adopting the presented resolution with edits.
Thank you, Ali.
Thank you.
Council, questions? Councilwoman Hoeworth, followed by Councilwoman Lesser.
Yeah, Ali, or Miss Lookon, if you could get back up.
Sure.
I was flipping back and forth to follow you. So if you're looking at the resolution, the last item that you mentioned, which I thought, I didn't know if that was under recitals, section C, number five, where, but you were, where was? You were talking about, like, the actual actions. Could you repeat?
Yes. So that's in C4.
Oh, four.
So it's the paragraph that begins, "The City Council enacted ordinances sharply limiting the creation of new bathhouses and other visitor-serving facilities, creating obstacles for traditional beach-going experiences, i.e., changing into bathing suits and making parking difficult in the area around Bruce's Beach." Sorry if I didn't make that clear.
Thank you. That's it for me.
Councilwoman Lesser.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question for the city attorney. Mr. City Attorney, the staff report includes reference to five government entities that have issued apologies for historic injustices since 2021. I guess the question is, what litigation has followed? What has ensued since those apologies were issued by those government agencies?
Yeah, so we did some research on all five of those, and discovered, we could not find any litigation arising based on their apology. And these are recent examples, and I think they start, even Glendale and other cities also adopted resolutions, and we have found no evidence of lawsuits filed against any of those cities.
Okay. Thank you.
Council, any questions? Councilwoman, by Mayor President Franklin.
Yes. Sorry. I'm not having a good week with tech here. So, City Attorney Barra, if I may, so those examples that were given, how close were they to the experiences that we had here on Manhattan Beach?
Well, so most of those were against Chinese immigrants, they were against Asians and Chinese, and they were far worse than what Manhattan Beach did in condemning the property or acquiring by eminent domain. There were laws that prohibited Chinese children from going to public schools, there were burning down of laundries, there was laws that prohibited laundries made out of wood, and so there were just a lot of things that were just far worse than what was experienced here. I'm not trying to dismiss what happened here, I'm just saying that they had some pretty horrible things that they did back, you know, 100 years ago or so.
Were, I don't expect you to know all the details, but generally, were properties seized through eminent domain proceedings?
We couldn't find any, but some, there was some recital for one of the cities about the city, perhaps involved with burning down a house, and there was property damage. There was a riot, like in 1877, up in San Francisco, and I think maybe in San Jose, where government officials were looking the other way, and laundries and houses were burned down. So there was substantial property damage.
Okay. But not the seizing of properties?
I could not find any, any of those instances of any acquisition by eminent domain.
Great. Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Hoeworth.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a question for the city attorney as well. During public comment, I think, there was a caller who referenced, they said, well, I believe the city's already facing a lawsuit regarding this apology, and we are not. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, that was, okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Napolitano, Steve, any questions?
No questions, Your Honor, thank you.
You're welcome. All right, council, turn it back up, open up public comment. Please come down, want to speak, you spoke before, do not speak now. Anyone else want to speak on this item? It's okay, folks, we'll be here for a while. You tell.
You tell. First of all, good evening, City Council, members of our community, neighbors, friends. First and foremost, I'd like to say thank you very, very much for being a body that listens to the people. I've been living on Morningside Drive for the last 18 years. I pretty much perceive Morningside Drive, we used to look at our block as perhaps the most diverse neighborhood in Manhattan Beach. You got a Black family, Jewish family, a Chinese, a Japanese family, and Vietnamese. And diversity was our strength. I explained to neighbors what the red, black, and green pan African flag was, my son got a menorah for Christmas. Literally, it was, it was a neighborhood in which I would say diversity truly was expressing itself in its best form. I'm here to say that I'm in favor, and hoping that the council finds itself able to offer an apology. Briefly, just to tell you, my mother is 85 years old, she's from the South, she did not have an easy life, and what I still find is that her demeanor, sometimes, she can be rude, and she can be insensitive, and to a certain degree, she can be what I would consider almost racist. But in situations that I find myself, if she's like that, or if she expresses that type of behavior, I find no problem with apologizing for her. And apologizing for her, I don't love her any less. All the wonderful things she's done in life are still relevant, but she, I realize she was from a different time, a different place, in almost a different world. Let's make the apology. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. And thank you for your many years of service to the Beach Cities toy drive. Unsummed hero there. Our next speaker? Anyone else care to speak? Former Mayor Hildy Stern.
Good evening, Mayor Montgomery, and members of the City Council. My name is Hildy Stern, I'm an almost 30-year resident of Manhattan Beach. I know it comes as no surprise to any of you that I am in support of a resolution of apology. And while I'm not going to reiterate everything that you've heard in all of the public comments tonight and by email, I just wanted to thank you. I'm very grateful to each of you for revisiting this issue, and for not only looking back at the actions of the council of the 1920s, but also reflecting on the actions of our prior council of 2021. And while that wasn't too far back in our past, when that apology was not adopted, you're willing now to take the time to reflect on how that has impacted us, and to really look at how to correct those actions. You've had a couple of years to learn the impact that decision had, recognizing the inadequacy of the decision made by our prior council in 2021. So thank you for being a leader that takes your actions seriously, who learns from prior actions and considers how to do better for our whole community. Mayor Napolitano, your personal apology at the plaque dedication was a turning point for our city, which was then followed by Councilmember Lesser and Hoeworth requesting this to be brought back for reconsideration. You each showed great bravery as leaders who are willing to listen and to learn. An apology says you firmly recognize that the racially motivated actions by the Manhattan Beach community in the 1920s was unacceptable. An apology says you do care about everyone who lives, works, or visits Manhattan Beach. An apology says you stand with our entire community in condemning racism and will always strive to be better. An apology says you are a leader that we can be proud of to represent Manhattan Beach. Thank you for standing up for our entire community. Thank you.
Thank you, Hildy. Our next speaker? Speakers?
Mayor, Members of the City Council, Michael Jenkins. I speak here today as a 45-year resident of the city, member of the Bruce's Beach Task Force, and a member of MB United. I also want to thank you for returning this item to your agenda after a two-year hiatus, and considering one of the principal recommendations of the task force. We recommended an apology because an apology expresses regret for the impact that the 1924 action had on the Bruce family and other affected property owners and their families. An apology distinguishes our intentions for our city from that shameful action of our forebears. An apology demonstrates to our children that when an institution acts unjustly, it should seek the truth, apologize for its failings, and recommit to justice. An apology does not label our city or our residents racist. Rather, it shows that we understand and reject a racist act from the city's history, and as a community, repudiate racism. No one benefits from hiding the hard truths about racism in American history. The way to combat hate and intolerance is through education and the creation of environments that teach respect for others, respect for differences, and sensitivity to injustice. This doesn't divide us, it strengthens and unites us as a community. The psychological and sociological value of formal governmental apologies to racial and ethnic groups that have suffered at the hands of government is well documented. Apologies establish accountability, are prerequisite to healing and reconciliation. There are many examples of governments offering apologies for past wrongdoing. For those who fear that municipal liability to those whose property was taken will result, the statute of limitations would be an insurmountable bar, as would governmental immunity relating to any available claims. Finally, with respect to the resolution itself, I suggest, as Jeremy Stern suggested, you delete the last sentence in recital F, and you not delete the sentence dealing with the cordoning off of the beach. I don't find that one ambiguous at all. Thank you very much for the time.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker?
Hello, my name is Kristi Hogan, and I'm a 32-year resident of the city, and had my business here for a couple of decades, and I'm here also to support the effort to offer a real apology. And I want to say how much I appreciate your leadership in continuing a community dialogue about race and justice. I know that there are easier paths that you could have taken, you could have gotten away probably with shrugging and saying that the former council did what it did, and leave it at that. So I admire your willingness to take on this difficult obstacle that's clogging the path to our better community. There are few things in this, at this moment in history, more important than devoting serious attention to the dismantling the systems that have advantaged some people because of their race. We are here to reexamine not, not just whether or not some prior council succumbed to some pressure to take an action to satisfy some racist ends, but rather to explore how we can be anti-racist, how we can use this episode to reinforce our commitment to reach the opposite outcome that was pursued by our city lo these many years ago. I think a real and sincere apology creates an opportunity to distinguish ourselves from our forebears. I know that you're not the City Council of the 1920s, but we have, I guess, term limits to thank for that, but through your words tonight, you can help state our intention to move this community onward. And so I wanted to come down tonight and thank you for your thoughtful efforts in that regard.
Thank you, Kristi. Anyone else here has not spoken tonight? Let's go to Zoom, please, Martha. No Zoom comments. Anyone else? Close public comment, council? Close public comment, council? I'm sorry, Councilor Hoehwirth, you pushed the button, thank you.
I listened to your speech, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
So I'm going to make a few comments, not about the apology itself, because I think people are clear where I stand on that. I want to thank former Mayor Hildy Stern for her efforts, both as a council member and currently. Her grace and strength has really meant a difference in this community. You've made a difference. And I do want to thank former Mayor, Ms. Steve Napolitano, who I think is still listening on Zoom. Because I think, of course he is. As former Mayor Stern said, his comments shifted this community and signaled to all of us that it was time. It was okay, in fact, it was incumbent upon us. I also want to acknowledge current mayor, Richard Montgomery, who's been at this longer than any of us, I think since 2007?
Five.
Okay, five. But who's counting? 2005, when he was first elected to council and wanted to make an apology then to the Bruce family. And I don't want that to go unmentioned, nor do I want you to just have to say it. You know, because that's important. And I think it's often said, people appreciate when they're politicians, or I prefer the word leader. They just do, can admit when they're wrong. Of course, I don't have to admit that I'm wrong right now. No, I'm kidding. But I think all of us have grown a lot, have learned a lot in the last several years. And I don't blame anyone for what they thought was, they were doing what they thought was right, but they were wrong. They were wrong. We have a chance to correct the course for our city. We have a chance to say, if we were wrong, that, you know, we were thinking about different things, and this is not just okay, but we must do this. This is the right thing to do. And that is all I will say. This is the right thing to do.
Thank you. Councilmember Lesser?
Well, for me, it was the dedication of the more factually accurate plaque at Bruce's Beach and the eloquent comments by our colleague, Councilmember Napolitano, at the dedication ceremony that allows us as a city to review how we've responded to the facts that have now been documented by the Bruce's Beach Task Force and its history, Task Force, History Advisory Board. In 2021, the council rightfully stated that "we are not the Manhattan Beach of 100 years ago. The community and population are loving, tolerant, and welcoming to all. We reject racism, hate, intolerance, and exclusion." But this was not always the case. For those that are watching this, or those that read about it after the fact, I encourage you to read the Bruce's Beach History Advisory Board report. It describes deeply troubling actions by our city government, not just random residents of our community. The City Board, the predecessor to our City Council, led the proceedings in the 1920s to condemn the properties on the land that is now occupied by the city's Bruce's Beach Park and the county lifeguard offices. Board members acknowledged after the fact that their actions were racially motivated, in part, at least in part. So why revisit this issue now? That's what many are asking me. The unwillingness of the City Council in 2021 to apologize once this history was documented and known did not go far enough. To simply acknowledge, empathize, and condemn the city's racially motivated actions, that's how the city characterized it, is insufficient. As mayor in 2017, I was proud to join with three of my current colleagues on this council and the Manhattan Beach Unified School District Board to adopt the Manhattan Beach Inclusion Pledge. We committed to stand up to all forms of hate, bigotry, violence, and bullying, and to take action, to not just make them words, but to do something. The draft resolution proposed by Councilmember Napolitano in 2021 that is before us tonight includes the pledge and an apology. I support both. I support adopting the resolution with certain amendments. And I would say this, by apologizing for the actions of prior city leadership, we recognize our history for its good and its bad. We're open, we're transparent, because that's who we are. We honor our pledge, and we help move our community forward. So with that, I do have some proposed revisions, but I'd like to hear from my other colleagues before we get into the specific resolution and potential amendments.
Mayor Patton Franklin?
Yes, thank you. So I stand by every word I spoke two years ago, April 6, 2021, with regards to whether the city of Manhattan Beach should issue a statement of acknowledgement, condemnation, and empathy, or a statement of apology. Quote, "We can't paint the entire city at that time or today with a broad brush of racism due to the acts of some of its residents and members of City Council 100 years ago." Yes, there was harassment by some of the residents. Yes, there were bad acts by some of the residents. Yes, there were immoral acts by some on the City Council. But no resident living in Manhattan Beach now is responsible for the racist actions 100 years ago. End quote. Speaking today, I'm personally sorry about what happened to the Bruce's and other families who made Manhattan Beach their own. But the issue of liability looms over our actions today and cannot be easily or lightly dismissed in the tenuous and litigious environment in which we find ourselves. Some suggest it's not likely there will be lawsuits seeking reparations or restitution if the city issues an apology. But in the Los Angeles Times on March 19, the day after the Bruce's Beach plaque was dedicated, it was apparent an apology, personal or from the city, will never be enough. Kayvon Ward stated in that article, quote, "Manhattan Beach still has a debt to pay to all the black families forced out of the community and to all the black people they continue to systematically prevent from taking up space in that community." Unquote. A Bruce family spokesperson has stated in the New York Times, quote, "The restitution and punitive damages Manhattan Beach..." And, sorry, let me start that over. "The restitution and punitive damages Manhattan Beach is going to have to pay. We're going to keep up with them until we get it." Unquote. Regardless of my personal feelings, I represent the city of Manhattan Beach, and my job is to protect it from liability. Two years ago, the previous council voted four to one not to apologize and to issue a statement of acknowledgement, condemnation, and empathy. This action was supported by an over two to one margin of residents in emails to the council, an unprecedented 251 to 116, and provided little to no litigation exposure. Therefore, at this time, I cannot support a statement of apology. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Napolitano, Steve?
Thank you, Your Honor. No relation to liability. Sorry, it's nonsense. There's been nothing shown of that. The city attorney's been clear that there's no evidence or case that supports liability based on the apology. As for other comments on this, I made them with the plaque dedication. I stand by them 1,000 percent. I want to thank my colleagues for the courage to put this back on the agenda. I appreciate that. I appreciate this opportunity. As I made a prediction in 2021, after I said that the acknowledgement and condemnation was just a house thing, that I predicted that a future council would adopt the apology. And I couldn't be more proud that I'm a part of this council that's going to do that right now. Not because it's woke, not because it's performative, but because it's the right thing to do. I know, let's do the right thing. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Before we get to Councilman Lesser's revisions on what he might change on the language that proposed here, I'll give my comments and then come back to any revisions we might have. As Councilman Hoehwirth mentioned, this is deja vu for me. Those of you that were here in the city in 2006 remember what happened when we changed the name of Kulikam Park to Bruce's Beach Park. I was more of a history person that believed that the park itself, the plaque, should be at the location where the incident took place, the Bruce family should be at the property, not at the park. Regardless, I thought the way to recognize what happened was apologize in 2006. And I brought that up to the council. The council didn't want to go for that. I thought, you know, the mayor at the time said, "It's the park renaming or nothing." That was a mistake, 2006, another mistake. Fast forward 2020. A lot going on, all everybody knows. Former Mayor Stern knows. Franklin knows, we all know what it was like in 2020. There's, every day, you're spending different things going on. No matter what we would say from the dais up here, and yes, apologizing as a mayor doesn't carry the same weight as apologizing as your team, as your council does. So it went by the wayside. 21, there's so much going on, again, listen to our attorney in the issue about acknowledgement. What about the liability? What do we do? To Mayor Patton Franklin's point. Four one decided, all right, we're not there yet. We're pushing in the right direction. So for me, 17 years later, we're back where we started from. A different council, different time. We're not in the middle of COVID anymore. It's, we're past all that, hopefully. We're not going backwards in time. But in order to move forward, and I don't know who said it tonight, that we need to move forward to an anti-racist city. We are an anti-racist city. If you live here more than a year or come down on weekends to downtown, don't use outdoors around here. That's not the city. We're not the city back then, not the people back then. What you see the last 10, I've been here 34 years. I haven't seen an instance of that in front of me yet. And not that I'm not looking, I don't see it. I mentioned Tim's talking about his block where he lives. I have a similar block, folks. It's the U N of Manhattan Beach, and you want to see that. How many of you not come downtown on a weekend and tell me what you see and what you don't see? So to me, I appreciate my colleagues, Lesser and Hoehwirth, bringing it back up. I understand where we're trying to go. I'm proud to join them on a semblance of an apology based upon the revisions Councilman lesser will make. We're in the right direction, and let's go from there. With that said, move to you, Councilman Lesser, for your revisions.
Well, first and foremost, I see that there's a motion that's been made by Councilmember Hoehwirth, and I wanted to see how she proposed to proceed, if she wanted to get into some of the details of the...
Yeah, and I did press my button again to speak.
Councilor Hoehwirth, you're first up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And I will get to the motion. I hope we can get to unanimous decision. And because I would like to challenge Councilmember Franklin with respect, that we have been told, we have researched, we... An apology does not equal liability, okay? In fact, not apologizing might make us more susceptible to a, some sort of action, and some sort of taint, and some sort of pall. Empathy, an acknowledgement with empathy is the worst kind of apology I have, can hear of. I mean, apology is empathy. Apology means, wow, that must have been awful. I'm really sorry. Acknowledging it happened is like, is nothing. So I really hope we can get you there, because if you're worried about liability, you know, we had the Hyros decision a few months back, which by us taking the action that we did probably saved the city tens and tens and tens and tens of millions of dollars in lawsuits. And you weren't so concerned about it then. I'm going to challenge you, because I think it's pretextual, and I think we will, this will, we will prevail as people who took the right action. So I don't doubt where your heart is, and no one else should, because this is a good man. So I want you to understand that I believe that, but I also think it matters and would be wonderful to have a 5-0 vote. I can talk about the motion I would make. Obviously, everyone gets another chance to talk, but I will... My motion would be to accept resolution of apology. And I couldn't keep track, quite frankly, of the exact amendments or changes. But I think that we will agree on them. I mean, it's moving something down to paragraph two, it's taking this out and doing that. And so I wanted to, it was, I very selfishly pressed that button to make the motion, so go ahead and tell me what the changes are that you will make.
So first of all...
Councilwoman lesser, go ahead.
All right. So what I heard from staff and in the staff report, I would propose to adopt, however, I did want to have a discussion about a few where questions were raised. So shall I go through them in order so we can follow them? And then I welcome, to the extent that this was originally Councilmember Napolitano's resolution, to the extent that he has a position on some of these proposed changes, I really would welcome to hear from him, too.
Agreed.
But just to keep the conversation moving, starting with the recitals, in paragraph A, there was a recommendation to change the words from half dozen to five.
Yep, agreed.
With regard to section C in the recitals, subsection small two, deleting the unknown persons, letting out the air, delete. With regard to subsection three, I welcome further input from other colleagues on the proposal by staff, where actually staff was reflecting comments from a member of the task force with regard to an adjacent property owner cording off property. I welcome input from other colleagues as to whether or not to leave that in or delete it.
Could we get clarification from staff why they wanted to delete it? Perhaps it was disproven after the task force or not? So I'd like to hear that.
Great, yes, thank you for your question. And the, so the second subsection under C, where it begins, an adjacent property owner. So that one, it was suggested to be deleted because it was uncorroborated. It could have been the act of a random citizen. It's unclear who actually committed that act. And so it was from the history advisory board, former history advisory board members, that we just delete that section?
I'd rather stick with as much in the way of facts that we have in this motion, because that's the point of why we're trying to proceed.
Agreed.
So if that is the recommendation I'd propose, removing it. But does any other colleague or...
Well, let's deal with the motion, since, before we get their agreement or not, right? Like, that's the motion, isn't that how we should do it procedurally?
I asked the attorney, can it be easier for us to go through, word submit this now and make one motion, or make the motion and word submit it after?
It's best to go through the suggested changes and then make the motion on the revised resolution.
Start with your first resolution.
Okay, so in which case, I propose we delete subsection C three. Moving on, the subsection C five, I did not quite capture staff's paraphrasing of what the recommendation was with regard to creating obstacles.
Correct, so it's actually C four.
C four, excuse me.
C four, and the suggestion was to include some language there, and I can read it off to you, that section, as it's suggested.
Please.
Okay. The City Council enacting ordinances sharply limiting the creation of new bathhouses and other visitor-serving facilities, comma, creating obstacles for traditional beach-going experiences, i.e. changing into bathing suits and making parking difficult in the area around Bruce's Beach, comma, in direct response to the popularity of Bruce's Beach among the black American community, semicolon, and.
I would propose to incorporate that modification. Subject to any other comments?
Councilor Hoehwirth, you good with that?
Yep.
Councilor Franklin? Mayor Patton Franklin, are you good with that?
Yes.
I am as well. Next revision?
Onto paragraph E, I was just going to open this up. Staff did not recommend this, but there is a reference to persuading the City Council, which at that time, in the early 1920s, before 1927, was known as the City Board, I believe. So I propose to use the language that was used in the advisory board report. So I propose to use the language that was used in the advisory board report, which would refer to, the whole sentence would be, gosh, or let me just pick it up. It would be a reference to the Board of Trustees, comma, the precursor to the city council, comma, as opposed to saying the city council, because that's the way the board report refers to that body.
That makes sense to me.
I agree. Mayor Protem Franklin?
Yeah, that's fine.
Paragraph F, as in Frank, the last sentence, there was a proposal to remove the last sentence with regard to the condemnation of properties owned by other races. And I really just wanted to have a council discussion to see if anyone else wanted to keep that in or remove it, whether it was factual, whether it was included in the history advisory board report. Maybe I could ask Ally that question for a start.
Yes, so you're referring to subsection F, the last sentence that says twenty-five other properties owned by white property owners were also condemned as part of the action.
Correct.
And that is in the history report.
Commas.
Accurate, I'd leave it in.
Yeah.
Okay, then we'll leave it in. And then there were the other staff recommendations that are earlier in the document, but I think we caught them, and that has to do with the moving of the, the names of the individuals from the recitals in A to section two. Should we have Ally just quickly summarize that one last time, or do you think you got it?
I'm just following along, including John McCaskill, Eliza Urban, and James Leeslaughter?
Correct.
Yes.
And I believe that's all I have, unless.
I know the questions about it. Mayor Protem Franklin, are you good with that, including these revisions, including John McCaskill, Eliza Urban, and James?
Yeah, it went to A and two.
I mean, that's, that's accurate, right? It's in the report.
Yes, we're good.
Good.
Those revisions noted, no other revisions taking place.
That's my motion.
That is your motion? I'm sorry. Councilman Napolitano?
Oh, yeah.
I'm still here.
Did you, sorry, did you have any issues or questions?
No, I've been following along. Anything that makes this more historically accurate, I support. I went off the information available at the time when I drafted the apology. I appreciate the efforts of everyone to make it even more accurate this time, and I'm happy to support that.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Franklin, go ahead.
Yes, so the, starting on paragraph D.
D?
On the second page. On the second sentence, it says Manhattan Beach residents at the time are on record. To me, and this is what bothered me in the first, the first time we discussed it, it sounds like you're talking, you know, there were about six hundred residents in Manhattan Beach at the time. And what I would like to see is to put in the word some, because I would really find it hard to believe in a city that the Bruce family settled in, when all other cities wouldn't, along the coast would not allow them. I don't think that all six hundred expressed concern over the effect of a Black population. So I'd like that qualifier, and there are some Manhattan Beach residents.
Counsel.
Mr. Mayor, it sounds like it's your.
I'd ask Steve Napol, or Councilmember Napolitano, what, if he wrote this, like, what was his thought on that?
Yeah, and I, I see the value of that. I see it even more if Councilman Franklin will join in supporting any call.
And no, no arm twisting.
But I do agree that, I made the point in my remarks the other day, that not everyone participated in racist acts then, just like we're not saying anyone does that now. So I think having a qualifier there would be fun.
And I'd also like to mention on the next paragraph, where it says, the effect of excluding Black Americans from the community, again, white residents, if we can qualify that to say some white residents, for the same reasons.
I mean, it would seem, again, I would refer, it's okay with me, but I would also refer to Councilmember Napolitano.
Yeah, and I would look at the history advisory board and, and see that, I mean, I, I think it's, it is appropriate to show that not every, you know, that we're not indicting every resident of Manhattan Beach at that time.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
I agree.
As pressuring the city to, to exercise its power of amendment. I mean, we know that not everyone did. We don't have a vote, we don't have any proof, but, you know, at the same time, law averages would say that certainly not every resident of Manhattan Beach participated or tried to persuade this in council.
Thank you, Councilman Napolitano, I appreciate that. I only have one. Anything else?
Yeah, and then, and then one more point on the last page, the stand-up, the stand-up.
Against prejudice and hate.
Yeah, stand-up inclusion commitment. I know what it's saying, and I understand that. It just seems out of place here in terms of, what is the goal of this? I mean, if, are you expecting every single resident in Manhattan Beach to follow every single point here? Is it an aspirational thing?
Hey, everybody, quiet.
Is it a, I, I mean, I, I just don't really see why this is needed to be in this document right there. You're already stating what you want, you know, in, in the previous section. So is it, are you trying to, well, let me just leave it, let me just ask that question. Why is it there?
Well, and as the person who drafted it, it's because that is what the city adopted in our effort to stand up, be inclusive, show that we're an inclusive community, stand up against hate, prejudice, violence, and boating. Now, are we expecting everyone to follow everything? No, this is encouragement, it's aspirational, no one's forced to do anything, but it is something the city has adopted, and the city council, in representing the city and city government, certainly is trying to set an example by following these tenants and by having adopted them.
So it's already an official city document?
Yes.
Okay.
And Elsho, are you good?
Okay.
It was documented by acts the city already adopted, as Councilman Lesser said, I believe it was twenty-seventh.
Councilwoman Hoehwirth?
And the school district has adopted the same.
Thank you, Steve. Councilman Hoehwirth?
Yeah, just quickly, I mean, it also, it says, you know, it's, it's taking these steps that, so you apologize, but then it's taking us steps to behave differently, right, and to show that we want to be better. And I don't, I don't think there's anything in here that is that controversial, but I think it's really crucial. It's more, that makes it less a performative act and more of a, and this is what we will do.
Councilmember Lesser.
And I would acknowledge this, Councilmember, excuse me, Mayor Protem Franklin, and that is, when I first read the draft motion, the draft resolution by Councilmember Napolitano, I didn't get it initially. Initially gave me pause, too, because I remember that discussion, I was proud of it. But then it gave me some thought as to why we're taking this action now, why, in fact, we're revisiting this issue again two years later. It puts a broader context into why we're doing this again as an explanation for our community. These, as Councilmember Napolitano just indicated, these are standards that we aspire to. Obviously, we can't enforce it on everybody, it's in the law, but it helps explain why we're here, in my view.
Thank you. I'll jump into my own revision, my own suggestion. That very last sentence, and the former Mayor Stern is the one that wrote this, Hildy, to your credit, we voted for it. However, we offer this apology as a foundational act for Manhattan Beach's next one hundred years, and the actions we will take together to stand up against prejudice and hate for respect and inclusion. It is long overdue. I thought we were going to add that in there. That was my own, because for me, it's seventeen years, not two years, not three, seventeen years. But no one else wants to go there, understand it, but I, I would like to add that last phrase.
Isn't it in there?
No, I'm saying that's.
I wrote that, I wrote that, and I support your, your change.
Thank you.
Oh, oh, I get it.
I gave the wrong Arthur credit, sorry. I thought you and former Mayor Stern wrote that together. My apologies.
I support it.
So I'm sorry, just what the wording would be, and I, I support it, too.
It is long overdue.
Long overdue.
And by the way, now that you read it, I'm just wondering, should we say, as a foundational act for Manhattan Beach's next one hundred years and beyond? I mean, really, it's not just the next one hundred years.
I don't want to word submit it to death, I just want to put it in there, get it done for the next hundred years.
I'll just leave it, it's long overdue, I'm good enough.
Get her done.
Get her done.
Your views are all that can address them.
There we go.
Very last sentence, period, it is long overdue.
So it's a separate.
I like it.
It is longer, do you guys cool with that?
I think, I think it's wonderful. Hi.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Ally?
Hey, I just have one clarification. It sounds like you've adopted the edits proposed by Kristin Long that was emailed to city council and is available in the public record. However, one thing that wasn't said, in addition to other edits that you just reviewed, but I just, it wasn't said when you reviewed your initial edits that you were intending on including James and Anna Janet Leggett, as well as the Black visitors who sought beach access here in the second paragraph. And I just want to make sure you want to include it.
I do want to include that. They were a part of the swim out and the, yes, absolutely.
I'm fine.
Next one.
Anyone else have any words about the corrections to do? We're all good?
Yeah.
Anybody?
I made a motion.
A motion on the floor by Councilman Hoehwirth. I need a second before I can move forward.
So I've not seconded at a deference to see if perhaps another member who's been here longer would, or the author of the motion would like to second, but I'm happy to second it.
This is a group offer. You go ahead and second, Councilman Lesser.
I've seconded.
Second by Councilman Lesser and co-authored by Councilman Napolitano. A roll call, please.
Mayor Montgomery?
Yes.
Councilmember Napolitano?
Absolutely.
Councilmember Hoehwirth?
Yes.
Councilmember Lesser?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Franklin?
No.
Motion passes four to one.
Thank you all for being here. Well done, Ally, appreciate your time. And the task force time, everybody else that took time. We're going to move to our next item consideration, I'm sorry, number seventeen, consideration of the Coyote Management and Response Plan. City Manager Mo.
George Gabriel will make the presentation. Thank you.
Honorable Mayor Montgomery, members of the city council, George Gabriel, Assistant to the City Manager. The item before you tonight is following discussion at the February twenty-first, twenty twenty-three meeting, where city council receives a six-month review and update on the current coyote management approach. Following discussion, city council directed staff to adjust the city's approach to coyote management, including further exploration of a selective trapping program, and return to the city council, and return with the, to the city council with the revised coyote management response plan with further sequel analysis conducted. Following council directions, staff has revised the plan, and specifically the incident response table, which outlines and specifies coyote actions and contextual evidence that would necessitate a trapping consideration action within the selective trapping paradigm. Therefore, the table exhibits which observations necessitate trapping pending investigation by the city's animal control division. These actions include, and Martha, if you could share the screen, please, that would be appreciated. I'll go over the list. The first action is entering a private yard and injuring or killing an unattended pet without attractions present, biting or injuring an unattended free-roaming pet or pet on leash longer than six feet without attractions present, biting or injuring an attended pet, aggressive showing teeth, back, back fur raised, lunging, nipping without contact, and biting or injuring a person. And these are primarily, these are color-coded, as you could tell in the incident response table that is shown before you. It's primarily reflective of the, scroll a little farther down, Martha, please. Thank you. It's primarily reflective of the yellow, orange, and red categories that are there. The yellow, orange, and red categories reflect when a lethal removal would potentially occur. In developing these actions, it should be noted that staff sought to identify abnormal or dangerous coyote actions that would, that would threaten public safety. After all, that is one of the main pillars of the Coyote Management and Response Plan. Should a coyote exhibit any of these actions noted, the city, or especially in instance where it's biting or injuring a person, the California Department of Fish and Wildlife may lethally remove or capture the subject coyote. The response table specifies that all attacks are subject to investigation to ensure human harassment or provocation did not cause the action as well. Staff recommends that the city council conceptually approve the Coyote Management and Response Plan pending preparation of environmental documentation. That will conclude my report, and Police Chief Rachel Johnson, represented in the Animal Control Division, specifically is here as well for any questions from the city council. Thank you.
Thank you. Staff questions, Councilman Lesser?
So the comments I've gotten from members of the public concern whether we're going too quickly to trapping. And I guess my questions then address a little bit of what's on this chart, but more importantly, a practical understanding is, to the extent that we're laying the foundation for the ability to have trapping as a tool, what are going to be the steps first, particularly when public education is going to be a huge important part of this, to remove food sources, to remove vegetation?
Police Chief Johnson will elaborate on that.
Thank you, Councilmember Lesser, that's a great question. And I'll begin with, you know, throughout this chart and throughout George's presentation, we talk about pending further investigation, because what we want to look at when we're looking at these incidents involving coyotes, is are there underlying factors that attracted the coyote to that location? When we talk about, oh, I saw a coyote in my backyard, do you have a fountain in the, in the, you know, the throes of Southern California summer, you have a fountain that's bubbling that's a source of water for the coyotes? So we want to look thoroughly at all these incidents to make sure that the reason why the, if the coyote is exhibiting abnormal behavior, which means it doesn't have a fear of humans, there may be other mitigating factors to consider before we go to trapping.
How are we going to consider this a success to the extent that we implement trapping? And I say that based on what little I've learned through staff about Torrance, which has a trapping program, where they just continually are trapping the same number, as I understand it, of coyotes. And as I understand it, coyotes replace, you know, as, as one pod moves on or one group is trapped, others move into that territory. So how will we gauge the success of this? Obviously, you speak to a pet owner whose pet has been lost to a coyote, that's a different conversation, but I'm just wondering, how, how can we evaluate the success of this?
I think, sir, success is difficult to measure for this, because if we were, if we are, certainly if we have a coyote that attacks a human, we're, that's, that's cause for lethal removal, whether we adopt this plan or not. We will engage the California Department of Fish and Wildlife to lethally remove any coyote that is exhibiting, that attacks a human. But prior to that and all these other, we know we have these colored stages that we're talking about in our response plan, it's very difficult, the metrics can be very difficult to measure, what is a success? Some of the things that I've seen in my experience with coyotes is exactly what you stated in terms of coyotes tend to go where other coyotes aren't, so they're not competing for food sources and, you know, can be part of their own pack. And so if there's a place where coyotes aren't, we may, we may see more, we may see coyotes come, and so that's what makes it difficult to determine that a program is actually successful.
Thank you, Chief.
MPT Franklin?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Franklin?
Yes, thank you. I have to get used to that, MPT. Yeah, hi, Chief Johnson.
Good evening.
Thank you to your department and to George and his department for putting this together. I have a question on, at least in the staff report, it's page five fifty-five, it's that same chart, you know, the color bars? And under the orange, off to the right, and even at the bottom of the yellow, it says potential lethal removal, removal or capture unless attack is provoked by human harassment. unless attack is provoked by human harassment pending investigation. Now, we heard a lot of, you know, we heard a lot before in prior presentations that one thing you want humans to do is to haze. Is this to be confused with hazing? You know, if, if someone is hazing and then the coyote turns on them?
I'm sure. We're not talking about hazing as human harassment, but there is provocation. You know, just like with any other, with any species of animal, if you are provoking the animal, like cornering it, doing other things that provoke it, and then it attacks, well, that's human harassment, which is different from hazing where you are trying to get it to move away from you by, you know, making yourself large and screaming at it and things like that. There's a difference between a provocation, which would be harassment, and then hazing, which is the ideas that you're encouraging that coyote to leave and continue to be fearful of humans.
Okay. Have you heard any experiences, like if someone is seeing that their pet is being attacked by a coyote, they would actually go in a little bit further than just hazing because they're trying to save their animal? Or anything like that? I, I'm just thinking if that situation comes up, you know, I'm not so sure. I, I mean, that's protecting, you know, your, heaven forbid, a family member? You know, or your pet or your property from a coyote?
So I think there's, there's a fine line between hazing and provocation. When we think of provocation by, by a human being, we primarily think of an individual that is challenging a coyote or trying to elicit a, a reaction to a coyote that puts it in a defense mechanism. And so one example is that is let's say a human identifies den and, and some foliage. Well, you shouldn't be going at, to the den because most likely that den may have baby coyotes. And if there is a mother and father coyote that is there, they are exhibiting a nor, normal coyote behavior that is protecting their kin. And so when we think about human provocation, that's one of the examples of what we're trying to account for. With regard to hazing, hazing is usually done at a reasonable distance from that coyote so that you're not trying to elicit a response that endangers yourself. You know, usually hazing involves making loud noises, which can still be done at a safe distance. It sometimes involves what, what Animal Control does, which is flicker their lights at a coyote so that it can get them responsive. Hazing also denotes some level of safety that's associated with it, while human provocation can potentially put you in harm's way by the way you were going about interacting with that coyote.
I'm, I'm just concerned that all that's going to take time. And whether or not you can track down, if you decide after it, you say, okay, it was, it was hazing, it wasn't harassment, but you have to investigate it. Now let's go ahead and, you know, try to trap that coyote. That's going to take time.
And I, and I, I think that is a, that is a consideration, obviously. But from what we asked, Shane, from council direction, a selective trapping program is more careful. It is more vetted. It's not a, a program that is meant to trap at first instance or trap at all costs. It's meant to do it pending on a selective basis and doing so in a manner that is trying to account for a coyote that is more aggressive in nature versus a coyote that is engaging in normal behavior, which is, you know, you know, normal behavior, meaning, you know, pouncing around and, and foliage and so forth, so on and so forth.
So, so let's do a what-if, because it's, it, it sort, sort of happened. Let's, you know, so let's say a coyote decides to take up residence in your backyard or behind your, your wall, and it's in close proximity to a home. Well, everything's going to be close proximity to a home because we're so close together. But, and then, so the homeowner discovers it, and then you come out. I mean, is that a basis, the fact that it's so close to a home? Maybe even in the yard to warrant trapping?
Well, Mayor Pro Tim Franklin, we're going to need to investigate the full import of why that coyote is there. But the, the fact alone that a coyote is in someone's backyard doesn't give us enough information to decide if trapping is appropriate or not. If there are food sources there, whether that's a bird feeder that attracts squirrels, which a coyote could feed on, a water source for the coyote, or pet food that's left unattended for the pets that reside in that home, all those things may be reasons why that coyote is in that backyard. And so that's normal coyote behavior. It's not that it's become habituated to humans. It's just that it's seeking, you know, food and, and water in that backyard. We'd need to do an investigation to determine what the reasons were that the coyote was in that backyard, determine if the coyote has become so habituated to humans that is no longer fearing them. That would be, those are all the factors we'd be taking into consideration.
Okay.
You good?
Yep.
Good, thank you. Any further questions?
Just, Councilor Lesser? I have a process question, unless, Councilmember Napolitano has a question.
I do have a question. Thank you. Your Honor. I want to be transparent here. And under the yellow, orange, and red, it says potential lethal removal or capture. And it's my understanding that capture means lethal removal. From our past, my discussions on this, my understanding is that trapping requires euthanasia. I want to be clear that that's the case or not. If someone can clarify that.
Trapping, you have two options. It's either lethal removal or release at the same location at which you were trapped. Obviously, and, and based on the direction that we received from council, in all likelihood, if we are trapping, there is going to be a lethal removal there. I think the language is meant to be somewhat flexible. But obviously, I think council, our staff is aware that trapping, lethal removal is the, like the direction from council.
Any further, Steve?
Your Honor, thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Lesser?
So let me follow up on that. I want to better understand process in terms of what is before council tonight and where is our next decision as it relates to trapping? What's before council directly, as I understand, is to conceptually approve the Coyote Management and Response Plan pending preparation of an environmental, environmental documentation. But if council approves it tonight, staff will execute an agreement with a SEQA consultant for analysis service and then return to council with a trapping services contract. So that there will be another opportunity for council, if they decide that they're not in favor of trapping, to not approve the trapping contract. Is that right?
Per se, yes. There, there would be an opportunity tonight. By way of process, tonight, we are reviewing the Coyote Management Response Plan. Thereafter, if council does approve this plan as proposed, staff is, is trying to obtain a SEQA consultant in order to get the necessary environmental documents. Then staff would come back to the City Council, certify or adopt that those SEQA documents associated with the plan. Probably on that same vein, staff will probably begin to negotiate a contract with a trapper for services if, you know, just to have that flexibility and that service on hand so that if staff would like trapping services, that trapper would be available. But obviously, council need, would likely need to approve that contract because it would probably be over the, the threshold by staff to execute a contract because it's likely going to be over 50K.
Thank you.
Questions? George, one more for me. I'm sorry. I'm not asking for concrete numbers. But can you tell us and for the public here, what the last numbers were since our last report on sightings and, or any killings, acquisitions, takings? By coyotes?
Since the last report that was provided that contained January data, February and March data, just reflected additional sightings. I believe there's four or five sighting, additional sightings in February and four or five additional sightings in March. No, no attacks on pets and no attacks on humans in February and March.
Thank you for that. Councilor Haworth?
And just to follow up on that, I mean, if you look at your incident response table, the color-coded, if, if there's a sighting, there's, the city isn't automatically taking out a trap. I mean, it's, there's, there's this whole, you know, checklist of things that has to, to be in place. So.
And we encourage, we encourage the public to report it to Animal Control or utilize the city's Go Reach app for coyote sightings as well.
And we'll have, we'll shoot that out no matter what we decide to do. We're not, we're not saying that we're going to trap and euthanize every coyote that is spotted.
My point exactly. Thank you, George. Open up public comment. Going the wrong direction, okay. Anyone on Zoom care to talk about this? No, no, you're good, you're good.
Good.
I mean, I did.
No, no, it's, it's okay.
Anyone on Zoom? No, closed, making sure, anybody else? Closed public comment, council?
Your Honor?
Yes, sir. Councilor Napolitano?
I am fine with what's proposed. I think that we have to keep trapping in our back pocket and frankly, not be afraid to use it when we need it.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? I see a motion by Councilor Haworth. I see a question by Mayor Pro Tim Franklin, then Councilor Lesser.
Well, oh, wait, so am I.
You're first up.
I'm not, so I, I absolutely agree with that. It's a sound program, and we should be ready when needed to trap so we don't have to go through a whole process to get a certified, to be certified to use a trapper and get a certified trapper and the like, so. And I think, was there any seasonality to, to the sightings? I know it's winter. I mean, do they go to Mexico for the winter or something?
Primarily greater sightings occur in the spring and summer months. And then sometimes beginning of fall. But during the winter months, coyotes are more prone to be in their den and they are mating at that time and creating baby coyotes, biologically speaking. I don't know if they're in Manhattan Beach.
Thank you. Councilor Lesser?
Look, I see the direction this is going. I am not certain that, I think we've done enough first before we get to make the decision for trapping. It's not just the SEQA foundation, which we're going to need to do as a matter of law, but it's doing what was recommended to the city by at least the consultant that was engaged by the city last summer and others that I've sought to reach out to to try and get independent corroboration. Namely, there's a reason why there are more coyotes here. It's because there's food and there's hiding spaces for them. The way that that needs to be combated is with, in partnership with our public, there needs to be a more robust outreach than I think has been done so far, even though I give staff huge credit for what they've done so far. I think more needs to be done. Obviously, I think there is seasonality in terms of when they're in hibernation and when they're roaming. So clearly, we need to align some of our outreach to that. But I don't want to stop the process of at least having the SEQA study done. But in that process, I'm not committing to necessarily authorize trapping.
Understood. I think that is a no. Anyone else, comments? All right. I don't see a second. Now I see a second.
And, and my motion just for, you know, was to conceptually approve the Coyote Management and Response Plan pending preparation of environmental documentation, which was the staff's recommendation.
Clarification, City Manager Mo or, or Sisim Manager? Thank you, Steve. Clarification there, Bruce. Any contract, whether it's for SEQA or a trapper, will have to come back to council first.
Typically, if it's over $50,000, council would, we would seek your approval for that. And from everything we've heard, the SEQA analysis would likely exceed 50,000.
And the management plan contract with the, with the trapper would exceed 50,000.
That remains to be seen, but it's in likelihood, yes.
We'll see the bids before they come back. Will they?
We can bring those back at your request, even if it's under.
Yes, I would request it. We want to see both, the trapper and the SEQA consultant before we move forward.
Will do.
Councilor Lesser's concerned.
Thank you.
First by Councilor Haworth and a second by MPT, Mayor Pro Tim and Joe Franklin. Roll call, please.
Mayor Pro Tim Franklin?
Yes.
Mayor Montgomery?
Yes.
Councilmember Haworth?
Yep.
Councilmember Lesser?
Yes.
Councilmember Napolitano?
Much for my side, you know, do it.
Sorry, you're late to the party.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you very much. Our last item of the night is item 18, a very short, brief summary report. The consideration resolution approving a one-year loan agreement of the Serp Ascension Sculpture by artist, I can't pronounce, Thomas C. Kimbin, and allocate funding from the Public Arts Trust fund the amount of not to exceed 12,000. Parks and Director, sorry, Parks Recreation Director Lehman.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of City Council. We will keep this item brief. I'm going to introduce Alan Stewart to give a high-level overview and then introduce the team. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Montgomery. Congratulations. I haven't seen you in the seat yet. Nice to see you.
Thank you.
And of course, I will miss Mayor Napolitano's sarcasm initiative. So, all right, fine, nobody laughs at that.
Good to see you alive.
Yay. Okay. Thank you for having me here. My name is Alan Stewart. I'm the Cultural Arts Manager, and I will just very briefly introduce this item. I think most of you are pretty familiar with it. In 2018, the North Manhattan Beach Business Improvement District determined that they would like to commission a large-scale iconic sculpture that would identify North Manhattan Beach as a desirable place to visit and have kind of this, this big entrance piece. They engaged artist Thomas C. Parm to create the artwork, and staff began to meet with members of the bid, the bid chair, the artists, and council representatives to the bid to begin developing this, this project and usher it along. We met on site multiple times. Staff identified a few areas of concern, some of which were resolved and some of which not as much. The artwork evolved over the years since 2018. A few changes, notable changes that took place was the addition of this blue quartzite stone that you're seeing, the addition of the LED lights. At one point, there was a title plaque that was supposed to be on there. That has since been removed. At one point, the statue necessitated Wi-Fi camera power from the nearby North End Cafe. Those issues were resolved and removed. And the original proposal for this was also for the piece to be a permanent donation to the city, but that has been pivoted to a one-year loan, which is where we stand today. Some of the concerns that staff identified working on this project was the location. It partially blocks some of the views, but it also doesn't really exhibit the artwork in its full glory. So it's a little bit of a tricky location. The material, the quartzite stone material is also a bit of a tricky one. It's not a material that's conventionally used for outdoor sculpture purposes. It's typically used for more of your countertop type of application on the interior. So there's no, and the artist has also not used the material in this application before. So there's a great likelihood that the material is fragile. If it were to be damaged, it would be very costly and very time-consuming to repair. And we just don't know how the material would, will weather in our climate, whether or not it would get abraded or faded by the sun. So where we stand currently, the proposal is for a one-year loan of this artwork. It would be placed in a location outside of the North End Cafe, and it would remain unlit with the exception of 12 monthly light shows. We're calling them, that could be programmed to coincide with different events, monthly, you know, Valentine's Day, things like that, holidays. That's the word, holidays. Staff also conducted public outreach. We noticed residents within 1,000 feet radius of the proposed artwork to get their feedback. The feedback came back with about 32% opposed to the project and the remainder in favor of it. This project was also reviewed, as I mentioned, by the North Manhattan Beach BID, but also by the Cultural Arts Commission. The Cultural Arts Commission did unanimously recommend for the continuation of this project, and they also recommend, recommended to allocate funds that were requested by the North Manhattan Beach BID. So if approved, the fiscal implications would include a $2,000 stipend to the artist, and that would help to offset some of the costs of delivering, installing the artwork, some of the permits that are still outstanding and necessary, as well as for the artist to come in and conduct those 12 light shows because the artist would physically have to be present for each one of those shows for all 12 times. It would also include up to $3,000 for public works to assist with installation of this work, artwork, and up to $7,000 for maintenance should the occasion present itself that the artwork is damaged. artwork is damaged and needs to be repaired. It is a costly artwork to repair. There will likely be other costs that will have to be incurred by the artist at this point, primarily for permitting, as well as some engineering plans, site plans, things like that. So just kind of a summary of a few sort of pros, cons, it's a harsh way of putting it, for the artwork. Obviously, we know that we would love to have more art in the city, it's really wonderful to see, to see art, this is a local artist, so it's very exciting to, to have an opportunity to, to work with them, and it's wonderful to install something in North Manhattan Beach. We have so much here in downtown, so it's great to bring some attention to North Manhattan Beach. Some of the challenges to be aware of, again, is the public outreach that was not quite as overwhelmingly in favor as we would like to see. The difficulties with the location, and it's worth noting that staff did propose several other locations, and the bid ultimately decided that this is their, this is their preferred location. As I mentioned earlier, the challenges with the stone material, it's, we just don't know how it's going to respond to this application, but we do know that if it were to be damaged, it would be quite difficult to repair. And it's good to be aware that there's still quite a lengthy process before we can actually install this piece. There's quite a few things that still need to get done before we're ready to go. So if City Council were to approve this project, the next steps would be, the, the first of the next steps would be for City Council to determine whether or not they would like the city to be a partner in applying and in ushering forward this project. The reason to do that is it would actually save quite a bit of costs and it would actually save quite a few permits that we wouldn't have to then issue to ourselves. So if the city decides that they want to be a co-applicant on this project, then we can waive certain permits, which would be really great. City Council would also need to approve the location and allocate funds, obviously, and then the artist would have to complete coastal development permit, which has already been begun, but it's missing quite a bit of information, so there's quite a few things that would need to get done, including a site map, land survey, elevation survey, some engineering specs, certain things like that that need to get done, as well as this extremely long public works permit, ground right-of-way non-utility excavation permit, deputy inspection, and possibly other things. We are not at this point 100% sure what those costs exactly would be, because a lot of it depends on what the location is and ultimately what we decide to pursue in terms of partnering with the city. So that is the overview of the project. At this point, I'd like to turn it over to Donis Dusich, I apologize for butchering. She is the former executive coordinator for North Manhattan Beach. Unfortunately, Mike Sims, the chair for North Manhattan Beach, was not able to be here today, so she will read a statement on his behalf, on behalf of the North Manhattan Beach, and then we also have the artist here with us who can briefly go through the PowerPoint presentation and is available to answer any questions.
Got it.
Hi, everyone, I'm Diane Sedish, the former North Manhattan Beach BID executive coordinator, and I'm here speaking on behalf of Mike Sims, who couldn't make it today. Honorable Mayor and fellow council members, I appreciate your consideration of this art installation in North Manhattan Beach. As Executive Director of North MB Bid, I fully support the project and is presented to you today. As you know, we spent many years on this project. One of the reasons for such a lengthy timeline is the constraints in which we had to operate. Most limiting is the size of the district. The North Manhattan Beach bid is a very small district, reducing the number of optimal sites. I personally walked a district and couldn't locate any other locations that would be protected from the liquor traffic. To my amazement, I learned nearly every traffic sign in the medians is destroyed by vehicles routinely. I also have concerns regarding the feedback survey. However, I don't feel the picture on the postcard does the art piece justice. I was told the piece had already been built, so I visited Dom's workshop to see the piece in person. I can assure you that the piece is far more impactful and pleasing than the survey postcard represented. Lastly, there are other concerns, including the materials used for construction. I feel the limited time of one year addresses these issues. The North Manhattan Beach Business Improvement District Board, that's always a mouthful, thanks you for your consideration and encourages you to support this installation. Kindly, Mike Sims.
Thank you, much we like seeing you. Tell Mike you can email it next time. Good evening.
And Council.
Hello.
My name is Domasie Kevin Parham, and I'm the artist that was chosen to put this project together. And it's been a long ride, I'm appreciative of the process. I was inspired to get into sculpting from a traumatic experience in my life, a brain tumor, survived a brain tumor, and ongoing, ongoing treatment for it. So this is my therapy, and that's why I decided to donate it to North Manhattan Beach instead of taking a, a payment for it. So I'd like to continue forward. It started in 2018, and it was proposed, and it was rendered by a graphic artist, and then I started with procuring the stainless steel and putting the structure together based upon my, I'm a certified, certified welder for the City of Los Angeles and a certified welding inspector with the, I'm losing my thoughts here, but I'm a certified welding inspector, so I know metallurgy and I know what the components of the stainless steel are that help it prevent corrosion in the marine environment, so that was my metal of choice. It took a while to get some of the proportions together, and then there's the electrical component of it for the addressable LEDs, which do a light display behind the translucent And then I also engineered the, the sculpture to be lifted by forklift instead of a crane, just to minimize some of the cost for installation, so the for, so the sculpture can be moved around quite easily. And then this is the stone that is embedded into the sculpture. It is aquamarine quartz, quartz is on the Mohl scale of a seven, diamond is 10, it's very hard. The stones float in, in the, in between the metal, it's fastened together by, by fasteners that won't allow it to crack or break, but will allow it, but still keeps its adhesiveness to the structure. That has been approved by an engineer, as well as the, the structural part of it is, has been approved. And then there is a light component to it. It's supposed to show, but I don't really know how to click on that, but the lights move behind the stone. At dusk is a three-hour light show that we agreed upon. This is, these are just some of the, some of the shows that are already kind of mixed into the program, but I actually have an outside vendor who I am having put this show together for me, sorry about that. And then this is the proposed site location, and it, it was, I guess someone told me that if, there was a sign previously there where this sculpture is going, and we have determined that, that this, this sculpture is about 1,300 pounds and it's ample, the weight is, doesn't exceed the foundation. Also, the board is being wrapped for, with a clear wrap around the whole board, including the stone, for the reason of it being outdoors. The stone is, has no problem being outdoors, outdoors, but in the event that someone gets on it or moves it around, just to prevent anything from coming apart, it's fully wrapped with a clear wrap that is, it has a lifetime of five years. So I think that's it.
Well done. Council, any questions on Mr. Parham?
Thank you, Mr. Parham, I do have a question for staff, due to the mayor.
Thank you, sir, we'll ask staff a question behind you.
Can we leave that image up? And I had a question about its placement and its location. Namely, first of all, to what extent could this be something that's climbed on, or, I'm not sure to what extent staff has evaluated that, but leaving that aside, the larger question I have is with its location so close to this other business, where it almost appears to be an extension of the business, even though the colors don't quite match. So I had asked through staff whether there might be another location, even though I understand the position of the bid very clearly, this is the site that they'd like, but parking lot four, where there presently isn't, isn't anything. I'm not sure if there's any slides that were rendered based on my just asking, Public Works Director, as well as the Cultural Arts, excuse me, the Parks and Recreation Director, whether that would be a viable location. First, we'd have to hear from my colleagues, but I'm just wondering if there is another viable location, such as proximate to lot four, which is the lot at Rosecrans and Highland.
Thank you, Councilmember Lesser. Well, to address your earlier question, this is not super climbable. It is constructed in such a way that it would withstand if someone were to manage climbing it, but boy, they'd have to be Spider-Man. So this is, in terms of climbability, it's not a huge, huge concern. I mean, you could leverage yourself on the pedestal, I suppose, but it's, as artworks go and as sculptures go, that's, it's not too bad, climbability-wise. In terms of the location and its proximity to the business, it is our understanding that the business owner is in favor of the artwork, they, they do enjoy it and they are happy to have it in that location, even though, as you mentioned, it does look like it's almost part of the business. So the business owner is on board with the location. And then lastly, in terms of the location, unfortunately, we were not able to put together a slide for that, but.
Of course, for the council.
I might be able to pull, pull up a Google map. So, and, and yes, we did have some valuable feedback from our Public Works Department. It would be possible to put it essentially into the kind of grass planter section next to the sidewalk that's by lot four there. You couldn't put it on the sidewalk itself, it's too narrow, and you'd have to do a bit of work, you'd have to relocate some utilities, some, I believe there's some water mains that are under there that would have to be relocated, foundation would have to be poured, and so some work would need to get done. It is feasible.
Thank you.
Director Lee, you want to add to that?
Just to clarify, not water mains, there's some irrigation lines that we'd have to move, so it's not as substantive, substantial of a work that would have to be done.
Thank you for that.
Other council questions? Seeing none. Public comment, I'm sorry.
No, 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 I was going to request to speak.
Go ahead.
If the questions are finished.
Questions are done.
Okay.
No public comment yet, though.
Oh, okay.
Public comment? Public comment?
That's right.
Anyone here? Anyone on Zoom? So closed public comment, Mayor Pro Tim Franklin.
Floor is yours. To your point, Councilmember Horwath.
Yeah.
So I'm the council, or have been the, and still am the council representative for the North Manhattan bid, and so I've seen this, and it's so great to see you here in person. I've been hearing about this for so much, for so long, and hearing about you as well, and, you know, thank you for adding your talents to this and thinking about us. I'm in favor of it. I, I think it's a good location, that's, you know, we're, we're trying to do a, some revitalization in North Manhattan Beach, there's been the holiday stroll, we've had that now for two years, and that all takes place in that area there, and that has proven to be a great success to bring a lot of energy to that area of North Manhattan. So, so I think the location is good, I think the, the messaging is good, the lights, I believe we talked about that in terms of controlling it and not having it be a nuisance, you know, for the neighborhood. I think people are just going to love it and are going to walk by it and have their selfies and everything taken, taken around it, and so I'm going to, I'm going to vote to approve it.
So we're missing the mayor, so in the mayor's absence, oh.
No, the Mayor Pro Tim should run. Oh, there we go.
Yes. Counselor Horwath.
He may add some, he may add some comments while you're gone, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Yeah, no, I'm prepared to support it, especially, you know, I know that it's been going on long before I was here, you know, and if, if the, the bid wants to try this, I think that's great, and thank you to the artist, thank you for being here. I think your presentation actually helped me, you know, understand or, you know, like it even more. So thank you for being here. I look forward to some sort of, you know, fun social media campaign around the lighting of it when it happens, I think that would be super fun, and I look forward to attending during those three hours. Not the whole time, just saying.
Counselor Napolitano, as a resident artist, your comments.
Watch out.
Thank you, Your Honor. You know, I, I appreciate the effort here, but I can't support this at this time. There's just too many unknowns, all I heard of, a whole bunch of unknown costs. In the presentation, you know, I don't know what the liability is going to work out as to, you know, if it's damaged, who's responsible for that, costs on top of costs, especially for a one-year loan, which is far below most of our, our projects, I believe. So, you know, I would like to know more about the ultimate final cost of this, but right now, you know, I hear 12,000, but with so many unknowns, it sounds like a blank check for me, and I can't write that check right now.
Understood. Councilor Lesser?
I have concerns about the location, about whether this is the right piece for that specific spot, but I would share, Councilmember Horwath, the comment, that it was very helpful to have the artist here to show the project, to understand his passion, understand his, that he's trying to achieve, particularly because this is a one-year project and one year only, that's my understanding, correct? Actually, maybe I ask the staff a question, what happens at the end of the year or as we approach the end of the year? Why don't we clarify that before I make my final comment?
We're going to be asked a bucket.
So it, it is our understanding that the North End bid, because their ultimate goal was to have this be a permanent artwork, I believe there may be then a proposal from them to accept this as a one-year artwork, the one-year, or excuse me, as a permanent artwork, the one-year loan is meant to be sort of a test pilot, at which point, and to address a little bit of Councilmember Napolitano's comment, not truly question, I suppose, at this point, the liability for repairing the artwork, that is what the maintenance contingency is for, however, if you were to accept it as a permanent piece, that's, that would fall.
Sorry to clarify, so over the course of the year, if it's damaged and needs a repair, it's on whose?
The, the allocation of $7,000 from the Public Arts Trust Fund would then kick in for the artist, Mr. Parham, to repair it, and he would then be paid out of that $7,000, not to exceed $7,000 allocation.
Thank you. I'm prepared to support it for one year, but I do want this to come back to council, and then we'll be able to assess it at that time.
Counselor Horwath.
No, I made a motion.
All right, yes.
To accept the, the, like, may I look at the language here?
Yes.
To accept the resolution approving a one-year loan agreement of SURF Ascension and allocate funding from the Public Arts Trust Fund in the amount not to exceed $12,000.
I'll add my comments as well, I actually like it. Mr. Parham, I like that design, it's probably no one thought about that. A surfboard of Manhattan Beach, why not think about it? Brilliant idea, heavy enough so no one could topple it over, but yet movable by, by forklift, so brilliant, and I like the idea, we can change the lighting with it based on what season it is here in Manhattan Beach, or whatever event we want to have, so I, I think, I understand Counselor Napolitano's comments about it. I think we need to bring back more information from, from Parks and Rec, I mean, bring us back what the actual costs are part of it, we'll get that nailed down, something raises a flag, we'll, we'll consider it about it then, but I agree with my colleagues, let's try it for the year and see where we are at that point forward, so no further comments. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Napolitano?
No.
Councilmember Lesser?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Franklin?
Yes.
Mayor Montgomery?
Yes.
Councilmember Horwath?
Yep.
Motion passes four to one.
Thank you all for being here, I appreciate your time, we'll see you soon. Thank you all for being here. I appreciate your time. We'll see you soon. Our next item for council, we said we have work to do. Let's see, the letter L. City Council requests and reports, including our favorite, AV 1234 reports that my friend Mayor Pro Tem Joe Franklin, I'll tell you about the trip he went to Washington DC for NLC.
Yeah, so National League of Cities, it was, I learned it's held in Washington, and the great thing about the conference is that they bring in federal legislators and federal staff from various departments in the cabinet to talk with us and exchange ideas, mostly talk about grants that are available. And speaking of grants, we found that there's this grant finder application from LexiPol that's available for us to use. It has access to over $600 billion in grants. And it's free to, since we're a member in good standing with the NLC, to use. So I understand that we, in talking to City Manager Mo, that we can utilize it in various departments and look forward to bringing that onboard.
Thank you. I still attended National League of Cities Conference with Mayor Pro Tem Franklin. And I'll tell you what, it's not just the federal people that are there. And Joe got to see this. It's one-on-one time with all the officials from all over California that he hadn't met before, face-to-face. In three years, we've been doing it by Zoom. So it's not just interaction with our federal advocates there and legislators that we get to see. It's the people in California, other states that we're talking to. What are they doing? What about homelessness? What about AV? What's going on? Their cities, too. So it's 3,000 elected from all over the country. And although it rained on us the first, like, three days, finally got a chance to get out there and walk around a little bit in DC and talk to people, and it's amazing what you learn. I'll bring the catalog book for our City Clerk Felisa to have anyone check it out. There's so much going on. They have 15 different breakout sessions a day. Something will catch your eye, whether it's EV, whether it's homeless, whether it's this or that, or grants. And Joe was lucky enough to find the right grant portal information. Those of you wondering, that $300,000 grant we got from the feds, that came from that conference, from NLC. So I'm glad we went. I'm glad we made it back and back to normal. So that's all we have. Anyone else?
Nothing to report.
Councilor Napolitano, any AV 1234 reports?
No, we don't.
There we go. All right. Move to next item. And future agenda items. Anyone? No one?
Haven't we done enough?
No, sir.
All right.
No, sir.
City Manager report?
Yes, just two quick things. I want the council to be aware and the community that our police department competed in the Baker to Vegas run this last weekend. They did quite well. For those of you that are not familiar, it's a 20-leg relay race. It covers 120 miles from Baker, California to Las Vegas. It's got segments that are anywhere from four miles to 10.7 miles. Some of it's uphill. It's overnight. It's dark. It's cold sometimes. It's snowed in the past over that type of an event. It's really amazing to see all these teams from all over the world, frankly. The Royal Canadian Mounted Police run it. I think we actually had some people from other countries. I'm losing the spot here. But at any rate, they did very well. They came in seventh out of the 22 teams in their category. That entitles them to these trophy mugs that they'll proudly, yes, they're very coveted. And last year, they were Team 134, because that's where they finished overall. This year, they're in 79th place, so they dramatically improved their slot. And we teamed up with Hermosa Beach once again with their police department. And mind you, we're competing against some teams like from LAPD, where they have 10,000 officers, where finding 20 really great runners isn't that big of a deal. But obviously, with a small department like ours, it is a big deal, and so they did really well.
Captain Ikenlob?
Captain Ikenlob ran the last leg.
The bugs are used to be hot chalk that are sparking water.
Of course.
Of course, of course. And yes, it was the Berlin Police Department that also ran.
Of course.
Ah, Berlin.
So anyway, wanted you to be aware of that. And then a couple of you in the past have participated on a website redesign team. And so I'd like to solicit help from the council, if you'd like to select two of your members to be on that. We are going through that process, and council input last time was very helpful. So if we can get a couple volunteers or.
I live for that.
Oh, my gosh.
Councilor Lesser's.
It's feeling like 2011 all over again.
Speak for yourself, man. Speak for yourself.
You have nowhere to go.
You know where it's coming.
Wait, but if there's any blame to go around, we can blame it on the council members that are not on the subcommittee, right?
I will accept all blame, man. I go into this willingly.
All right.
Come on now.
Councilor Lesser and Haworth volunteer for the website redesign.
Very good. Thank you.
Make it pink.
You have the power. That's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. City Attorney report?
Nothing tonight.
Information on P, nothing else there. Close session went through. We're going to adjourn, folks, to Tuesday, April 18th, 23, 6:00 PM in City Council chambers. Thank you all for being here and good night. Passover, Easter. We'll see you all in two weeks. Not soon. Thank you.